Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Glendale Water and Power Commission Meeting, special meeting on the water ordinance change. And I just want to wish everyone a happy morning and hope everyone's alert for this, maybe sometimes strenuous proposal by our water commission staff. So I'll turn it over to Sheila.
Yes, we'll do the roll call. Commissioner Chan.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Yao.
Present.
Mr. Cavones, you want to take over?
Do we have any public comment? Is that on the agenda?
This morning, we are here to discuss a single issue, and that is the proposed adoption of the GWP water ordinance. And we are currently in extraordinary times when it comes to water supply. We are in a continuing drought situation, and the water supply situation that we currently see ourselves in is one that we've not seen in many, many, many years. So we have been working on a series of criteria that we will present to you this morning on potential water restrictions and the criteria that will be associated with those restrictions. Before we get to the water ordinance, I'd like to make two comments. First, our Assistant General Manager of Water Services, Peter Cavones, who will chair the rest of the meeting, was recently elected to the Metropolitan Water District Board of Directors. We're very, very pleased with that. We think it gives Glendale a very significant focus on these issues, and Peter can address some of those issues in more depth later in the meeting. Secondly, I've also been recently appointed to the California League of Cities Water Committee, which met last Thursday in Sacramento to address a number of the same issues that you'll hear today from a statewide standpoint. Myself and one other gentleman represent the Los Angeles area, and essentially, the issues we're looking at are water supply issues, which we'll talk about today, and water conservation issues, which we'll also talk about today. So I think the staff of GWP is well-positioned to present this issue, and we welcome your comments. In fact, we encourage your comments as we go through the presentation. At this point, I'd like to introduce Peter Cavones, our Assistant General Manager of Water Services.
Thank you, Glenn. Members of the Commission, good morning. Welcome. Before we begin, let me say that I want to express my appreciation for you taking your time to show up at an additional meeting in such an early, early morning hour. We appreciate that. We wanted to get separate time set aside to meet with you on this issue of changing the existing municipal code as it pertains to water conservation. We have identified the need to make a number of changes to the municipal code, and the way the city does that, the process that the city goes through, is through an ordinance. So we would prepare an ordinance that would go to City Council describing the proposed changes to the municipal code. If the ordinance were to be adopted by council, then the code gets changed to reflect those. So before we introduce an ordinance like that to council, we go to City Council and ask for permission. That's the first step before that, and say, is it okay with the council if we go ahead to propose changes? And if that's okay, then we proceed. And before we do that, we wanted to describe for you the drivers that we see as requiring changes to the ordinance, describe for you what we think will be the proposed changes to the ordinance, and also discuss with you a significant challenge that mandatory conservation will bring to the utility in terms of finances. So the subject of today is two topics. The first one is the proposed changes to the ordinance, and if you're on board with those, we would then proceed with asking council for permission to propose those. And the second is an overview for you of the financial difficulties that utility would have in mandatory conservation, present some options to you, make a recommendation, and then get your opinions and advice on that. So for the first portion of it, I'd like to introduce Joy Gaines, and she'll walk you through the drivers for the changes to the ordinance, as well as what we think in general terms would be proposed changes. We'll discuss those and then move into Part Two.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Joy Gaines, Resource Efficiency Advisor for GWP. And as Peter said this morning, we're going to discuss the changes that we're making to our water conservation ordinance. Again, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them during the presentation rather than waiting till the end, because probably in the long run, we will be able to make more of a clarification for you at that time. More than a year ago, we formed a committee within GWP to look at whether our existing water conservation ordinance would be sufficient for the present time, or whether we felt that it needed to be changed. After considering numerous options, we decided that the core of the ordinance would stay the same and that we would change or modify it to satisfy present situations. And also, I'd like to tell you that along the way, we met with members from different departments within the city that might actually be a subject to or affected by our mandatory ordinance, and got their input so that we're pretty well on the same level or same page at that time, so we don't have to go back to another department and say, please, or anything like this. They're right along with us at this time. Many of the ordinances are based on requirements of the best management practices that are in the MOU of the California Urban Water Conservation Council. That was, the MOU was signed by all agencies, or many agencies, in 1992, including Glendale. So we've been a member or part of that MOU and have been guided by these BMPs for that length of time. The other modifications are made to comply with sections in the model ordinance that Metropolitan Water District put into effect. Why are we looking at these two bodies? And I have to impress upon you, it is really necessary that we include this type of information in these, because these two documents will give us the ability to get funding from the state of California, and if we are not in compliance with the BMPs, AB 1420 has already said that we are not eligible for any state funding for water projects. And Metropolitan Water District now has stated that if we are not in compliance with their ordinance, or if we do not have an ordinance in place, that we will not be, or have the ability to participate in the projects that they offer also. So it's really a very important matter for us to make sure that we're in compliance with these two documents within this ordinance. The ordinance can be actually divided into five basic provisions. The no water waste policy, which contains restrictions that are in effect at all times and which carry violation penalties for noncompliance. And we'll look at each one of these a little bit more in detail as we get through. Number two is the percent water use reduction phases, where each customer will be given a conservation goal based on their 2006 water usage. Three procedures for penalties, and there's two different procedures, one for the no water waste policy restrictions, and also one for exceeding the conservation goal. Four procedures for an appeal process for relief from these penalties and enforcement. Our first looks at the no water waste policy. As it says, currently, we have 12 in the original conservation ordinance, in effect at all times. We're proposing 14, some changes, some modifications, and also proposing one other thing, and that would be the retrofit on resale, which is actually not part of those 14, but it's a separate ordinance. You have the matrix in front of you, and that outlines all the different changes. You will notice that some of them become more restrictive as we get higher into the percent construction phase, while many remain the same at all times, no matter which phase or non-phase we are in. The changes, the landscape change, we are, right now, it's 10 to 5 restricted no watering. We're changing it 9 to 6. The reason for this is that we want to make sure that we cover the time when it is the hottest to eliminate or to reduce the evaporation. We don't feel that it's, we feel that it's important that we don't waste that water, and also for our customers, if they're putting water on at that time, it's really not doing their yards as good as it would had they put it on when the evaporation wasn't as great. Hotels and motels are required to post notices, but also the option of declining daily linen service, that's a change. Dining establishments required to post conservation notices and serve water only when requested, that's already in the water policy. Addition, single-pass cooling systems are prohibited in buildings requiring new water service, and prohibitive of non-circulating systems and new car washes and laundries effective January 1, 2010. Dining establishments are prohibited from using non-water conserving pre-rinse dishwashing spray valves. The spray valves, we actually, about two years ago, participated in a program to retrofit many of the restaurants in Glendale with the non-water, or the water conserving pre-rinse spray valves. Hopefully, everyone is using them. Those establishments that were not able to get those, they need to retrofit those. Now, as far as the matrix is concerned, would you like to take a further depth look at that, or do you want to just review that on your own? It's up to you, whatever you would like to do.
By way of clarification, what the matrix, the multicolored handout does is it shows existing provisions of the code, along with any changes that Joy touched on. The last couple of slides were what would be changes to the existing ordinance. Everything else shown in the matrix is as it exists today in the conservation ordinance. The matrix, it's been designed to show you how increasing phases of mandatory conservation would have more water use restrictions kicking into effect.
Excuse me. How are you highlighting the changes right now with this matrix?
Actually, it's just, they're all within...
Altogether?
Yeah. Nothing is really highlighted as far as changes are concerned. Those will be the, what we call, water use restrictions within the no water waste policy if it is approved by the City Council. And so, and it also, as you notice, it, the first column is the no water waste policy. That's when no phase is in effect, but it's 100% of the time, and we're going to start looking at using penalty process for people who consider this not important and who continue to be in noncompliance with the water waste policy, even if we're not in any kind of a conservation phase. Then, as you see, it ramps up. Some of them, all the way across, every phase, they're the same. Some will ramp up. For example, landscape, we don't have any irrigation days until mandatory 20% rationing, and we're looking probably right now at 10%. But at that time, people would be restricted to two days a week watering, and then with 30%, or three days, then two days, then one day, and then no days, but just deep watering of trees, because we feel that when you get to 50%, any watering of landscape outside is a waste of water. But we realize that trees don't sustain themselves without any water, so we would look to at least maintain the trees and the large shrubs, but any of the lawn or anything like that would not be watered. That's just one of the examples of actually ramping up as we get into increased percentages.
Will you be describing the penalty process today?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Just to clarify, your 14 water use restrictions are not in addition to the 12 water use restrictions, correct? They're partly modified?
They're incorporated.
Okay.
Many of these are like no hose washing of paved areas and repairing leaks within 72s. Those are existing right now.
Right.
And so, actually, the ones that we're adding were taken directly from the BMPs and from Metropolitan's ordinance. There were ones that we had not considered that we put in.
Right.
And Ms. Gaines, thank you for your presentation. And I noticed that you started out the presentation mentioning that you worked with other city departments?
Yes.
You were trying to round them up to be on board with this? And then, just recently, you mentioned that as we go further along into the mandatory phase of the no water waste policy, that people might not be able to water their lawn or their outdoors maybe one or two days a week. So how have you worked with, for example, Neighborhood Services to make sure that they're on board with it? Because if you're getting mandatory conservation from GWP, and suddenly Neighborhood Services come back and slap you in the face for not keeping your lawn maintained?
Right.
How do you...
We've actually worked with them, and we've come to some meeting of the minds, so to speak. And we've, what we have said is if people are, have California-friendly planting, and that's what we're encouraging, that's no water, or low water use, native planting, and so on, that they don't, won't really have to water at that time. And so, we're getting further into that stage. But Neighborhood Services is totally on board with us. In fact, some of the penalties probably will be involved in some type of code violation Neighborhood Services will be actually issuing.
So are we going to discuss separately GWP's penalty for maybe increasing the financial burden on people who waste water? Also, are we also linking that penalty with Neighborhood Services where maybe we can request enforcement discretion during these mandatory conservation efforts? Is that the worst?
As we get into the penalty portion, maybe some of those questions will be answered. Let's discuss the penalties, and then we'll see. One of the things is we're actually going to be utilizing the penalty portion of, another portion of the municipal code for our violations. And so, they would be, they would be following the exact same penalties that they now issue for code violations.
Okay, because during this meeting, I'd like to see some kind of linkage between mandatory conservation versus Neighborhood Services enforcement discretion. If we're going to do mandatory, then maybe some other departments should be laxed in their rules during crisis.
Commissioner Yao, I'd like to highlight that recently, a landscaping ordinance was taken to council, and there was a provision placed in that ordinance that created an exception where someone is not maintaining their landscaping as a result of a mandatory conservation phase. So there shouldn't be, there should not be any such inconsistency. But certainly, we are also working with Neighborhood Services staff and planning staff to avoid any inconsistency in enforcement.
Great. I think the public will appreciate that.
And that's one of the reasons why we've met with the different departments, because actually, the landscape ordinance was done in answer to some of the questions we had when we were talking about the two ordinances being able to be compatible. Let's go on to, we've done the additions. The phases, we, at one point, the old phases, there was a 10%, 15%, 20%, I believe, 25, and then 35, 40, 50. We've made that a little bit simpler. Phase one is our voluntary 10%, which we've been in since the end of June 2007. The phase two is mandatory 10%, and we'll talk about that in just a minute, the differences. Phase three would be 20%, 30%, 40%, and then the last one, 50%. And as you will see by the matrix, what we have done is we have ramped up some of the restrictions to answer some of those percentages.
Pardon me. Could you clarify what's the base here from which these percentages are being deducted?
At this point, we're talking about 2006. You know, I, pardon?
Calendar year.
Calendar year, 2006. Actually, what we're looking at is the same billing period for each one of those. So in other words, if a single-family resident, their billing period was, and we're on two month billing period for a single-family residence, if it was a January, February billing of 2006, the January, February billing of 2009, and if we go into 2010, would be based on that billing period. So in other words, if they're in July, August, or something to that effect, their usage in 2006 would be up, so that would be what would be predicated on the 10% reduction, would be that usage. So, and it's done on a daily average, 60-day billing period is what we're looking at as far as giving them a goal on their bill.
Thank you.
And I might say too, that as we get into it, we'll talk about how we're going to set the goal for each one of the customers, and it will, again, as I said, be on a 60-day basis. There are two types of, well, we'll go through the phase two, the different things, and you'll see that on the matrix also, that as we have put this on here, what would be the ramp up for each one of the phases to reach the different goals. Let's go through them real quick. Again, on your matrix, you'll see these. Based on the local supply projection and MWD regional storage allocation, the recommendations will be for 10% mandatory conservation, starting July 1, and that would be your, what you're looking at, that would be phase two on your matrix. So anything in that phase two column that's checked, that would be what we would be asking. As you can see, we're not asking anything different than in phase one as far as the restrictions are concerned, but we are going to start giving penalties if someone exceeds their goal, and that's the next thing that we'll go into.
So for the mandatory conservation, you mentioned in the slide that it's based on local supply projected and MWD regional shortage allocation. What happens if we get a lot of rain and MWD changes their mind and increase the allocation?
I believe they have guaranteed that they wouldn't, once they went into or asked for mandatory rationing, that this would be at least for, I think, six months to a year. Wasn't it a year that they said?
It's a year, yeah. There was a lot of discussion about that, Commissioner Yao. As you can imagine, Metropolitan Water District and all the member agencies had the same concern. Everybody wants to be consistent and give the population a very consistent, reliable message. So nobody wanted to start and say, okay, now we're a mandatory, now we're not, or the other way around, which would be to say, now we're in 10% mandatory, now 20% mandatory. So there was a lot of thought and consideration as to what supplies are on hand, what's in storage, what the demand would be, what the demand reduction would be as people conserve water, enough to make it through a year. So the next time we would expect the change in the 10% regional shortage allocation by MWD would be a year from July of 2009, so it would be in July of 2010, at which point we may be in greater regional shortage or lesser regional shortage.
So one thing I don't understand is what are the triggers for this mandatory conservation? It seems like, based on MWD's projection, we don't go through phase two by July 1, so when do we get to phase three, four, five, and six?
Our plan is to follow Metropolitan Water District's regional shortage announcements. So they've come out and took a vote a couple of weeks ago that, starting July 1 of 2009, we would be in regional shortage allocation of 10%. Keying off of that, looking at our local supplies, we come to the conclusion that Glendale would have to conserve 10%, mandatory 10% conservation in order to avoid paying substantial penalties to Metropolitan Water District. So we recommend a 10% mandatory conservation. Now, next year, by the same time, Metropolitan Water District will come out with an announcement of any, if any, regional shortage at that time. And at that time, a year from now, we would come back and recommend a change in our mandatory conservation.
So it sounds like it'll be on a year-by-year basis where mandatory phase six might not be seen for the next six years if they continue to allocate less water?
Hopefully, we'll never see it.
Hopefully.
That would be catastrophic.
Is it also possible to go back and, maybe within the six-month period or less, to change it to phase three if the allocation gets worse? Or would there be...
No. And the reason, the reason we won't, we as a water industry, not Glendale only, is that water supplies really accumulate in the October-through-April period. That's when it rains, that's when it snows. And so, by the time we get to this point in time, we know what we have for the next year. So that really won't change.
Also, you may see that there may be some areas in Southern California that are asking for 15%. And that's because their allocation from Metropolitan Water District and their supply is greater than Glendale's. And so, what we're looking at is how we can make sure that we don't have to ask Metropolitan for any more that would put us over penalties, but at the same time, can maintain the 10% so that we have sufficient water for our customers.
Thank you.
There are two penalty types that we're talking about. The first one is the penalty for a customer exceeding their conservation goal, and it's the exact same that is right now. And let me go back and say that because the core of our ordinance that we're proposing is the old ordinance, which was enacted in 1992 during the last rationing period, you're going to see some things that haven't changed. And the only thing that we've really changed, or where we have to meet something that is a little bit different than the situation was in 1992. The basis of a customer's allocation goal that we are talking about will be 10%, their 2006 usage, again, at that billing period, minus 10%. And it's, their penalty will be that any of the excess over what their goal has been set would be billed at twice the basic rate for the first time that they exceed it. If, in the next billing period, they again exceeded that, the excess would be billed at four times the basic rate. Just the excess is billed at that. Their regular, their regular usage would be billed at their regular rate, and then the excess would be billed at that. Mainly because if we have an excess, Metropolitan Water District, where we now pay approximately $500 an acre foot, could go up to $2,000 an acre foot if we keep exceeding it. So the people who, this is only fair, for the people that are conserving and they're staying under their goal, they don't have a penalty. It's the excess over that that would be penalized, and that would also be what we would be penalized for from Metropolitan Water District. So it's kind of passing that penalty on through to the people that are, that are using more water than they're supposed to. The second type of penalty would be for the noncompliance with the no water waste policy, and that's what you have in your matrix. That's the restrictions. And we're going to be following the code that is already existing that Neighborhood Services uses, and there will be actually four steps in that code. The first one would be the notice to correct, and at that point, they would not be penalized unless they did not correct whatever they were doing. The next time, it would be the first violation, they would receive a violation notice and a penalty. And anything that we are going to be penalizing would have been verified by a city employee. And specifically, we're going to be looking to the Neighborhood Services people who do that for the other code violations to do that for us, and they have agreed that they would be able to do this for us also. And then, if that continues, the second, there would be a second violation, a third violation, and for any successive violations, not only for the penalties for the no water waste policy... policy, but also for any excess water usage, we do have the right to put a flow restrictor on their system for a specific length of time that would allow only one gallon per minute through their system. We also, and hope it never happens, but we also have the right to actually turn off their system should they continue to do this unabated and showing that they have no consideration whatsoever for what we're asking them to do. The relief portion would be the appeals portion. This, again, was established in the 1992 Conservation Ordinance, and we're going to be following that. The appeal process, and that's something that Peter and I were just talking about, you people could be involved in this because you act as the appeal board. The appeal would come to the department, we would review it, investigate the appeal. If we denied it, then the customer has the right to ask for a hearing before you. So the appeal process is rather lengthy, and it's also rather complicated. So we're looking at possibly calling for a special board meeting later on. We feel probably the first, we won't be getting the first appeals until August because the first bill that would go out with a goal on it would be July 1st. And so those people would not even, would not get there because they'd get a full month. So they really would not know whether they had exceeded or whether there was any kind of a penalty until August, or until August 1st. So we're looking at sometime in that process of having another meeting with you, we'll go over the entire appeal process, so you will be very familiar with it. And then should anyone ask for a hearing before you, you will have all our investigation material, so you'll be able to make a determination. Whatever you determine is the final. One other thing that we have, and I, it just so happens that I was here in 1992 when we were in the last mandatory rationing. We received so many appeals that we were working six months after rationing was over to still look at the appeals and work with them. There is an extreme amount of work done staff-wise. The appeal probably goes through at least 10 hands before there is a determination. And so because of that, the cost for processing fee is extreme. So we are asking a non-refundable $50 processing fee if anyone with an appeal form, so that we can make up some of that money. Because it's, like I said, it's a huge undertaking, and it requires a lot of work.
Excuse me, Ms. Gaines. What about refunding that $50 processing fee if the appeal becomes a success? Is that an option? They can pay it first, but then if they, success for an appealing, it's pretty much no fault of their own. Couldn't they be refunded that $50?
The same amount of work goes into an appeal that is rejected as well as, you know, accepted. So we really need that type of reimbursement. And again, it's going to be a lot more than $50.
Right, but is this in an ordinance, or is it just a GWP fee?
This is, you know, this, Commissioner Yao, this provision did not exist in the ordinance before. And based on our experience in '91, '92, the proposal is to include a non-refundable $50 processing fee in order to recover some of the expense. So that's what staff would be proposing to City Council. And to directly answer your question, the proposal would be that it's truly a non-refundable fee. The utility, your utility incurs the expense regardless of whether someone has correct or not. The volume of appeals that the utility experienced in '91 was close to 10,000 appeals. And so the thought is that, you know, that is a significant expenses that has to be defrayed. And if we were a for-profit retail operation, for example, running Nordstrom's or running Sears, a customer comes back and says, I'm dissatisfied with your product, and give them their money back. But we're not that type of an organization. We're a utility that is funded by rates, has expenses to incur, and that's all. And so our recommendation would be that it would be truly a non-refundable $50 processing fee.
Well, I agree. I think we need to have a fee to screen out those who just want to be, to pursue this frivolous appeal. But it seems like attorneys would, a similar case would be attorneys charging something, but if the case is success, then they would get attorney fees based on the side that lost. So I would see this as something that the refund could be very minimus. I mean, a lot of people might appeal and pay that $50, but only a few might be successful because there was a meter error or whatever the error was that made them appeal in the first place. So if they are successful in appealing in front of us, then I think they should be allowed that $50 back because it's not their fault.
One thing you need to understand, Commissioner Yao, is that it is not our error. It's just if some circumstances have changed within that family. We have not made an error to say that this is what you should have or anything like that because something has changed. And if, with the education that we're doing beforehand, if someone realizes that there may be some kind of a problem, they need to let us know ahead of time, so before they get a penalty, before they have to file an appeal. It's not our error. It's just something that, and we have no control of knowing how many people reside at a residence or anything like that.
Also, would like to add that if someone is disputing their meter read, that's not an appeal that they would have to file a $50 fee for. We get those now all the time, and that's, you know, customers don't have to pay for us to reassess the accuracy of the meter read, nor would they have to in mandatory conservation.
Right, because I just want to get to the point where people don't have the money to go through this appeal process. So I want to be able to have it open to the public to appeal when they feel that it's not just for, to see their bill so high that they can come to this GWP staff or the commission to make that appeal, rather than having the burden of, a financial burden. Even $50 might not seem a lot, but there could be people who might look at this as something a deterrent to making an appeal.
There are specific things within the ordinance that people can use as an appeal. If their bill is extremely higher, they have extreme excess, there's very few reasons why that would bring it down to a point where they wouldn't have some type of a penalty. The penalty would be, say, if you had another baby or something to that effect, we're only looking at probably 60 gallons per person per day more. That's not a lot. And so if someone has an extreme excess, then they, we will never be able to reduce it down to zero.
I'm not sure how we can agree on this, because I would have to see something where, I mean, I know there might be a few cases where it could be a success, or it could be no fault of their own for whatever reason, that I would like to have that fee paid back to the defendant if possible.
Commissioner Yao, under the general refund provision of the municipal code, it's my understanding that an appellant would have the right to get 50% of the fee back if they're successful, less the amount that it costs staff to process the appeal. So depending on what the processing costs would be, I mean, that's an alternative, it's my understanding the processing costs are in excess of $50.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's, what you need to balance though with is, you know, we have the social justice issue, should, if somebody's making a good case. On the other hand, everybody's utility has incurred a far greater expense. I mean, we're looking at significantly greater staff expense. It's your utility. So one way or another, you need to balance those considerations.
We're going to have to probably hire some part-time people to work on this, should the appeals become great. In 1992, we actually increased the staff of what at that time was the conservation office by five, plus two part-time people who went out and did the investigating. We don't, we can't, we will take people's word for certain things, but there has to be an investigation on some of these. And so that's very time-consuming. We're looking at probably three-to-four hour man-hours for each one of those, which would be much more than $50. So it's, and what we can do is, we can put together, I've kind of estimated what it's going to cost for one appeal that comes in, that we have to do full investigation, then it would come to you people. And it's way over $50, but we can let you see what it's going to cost us.
I don't want to hold up your presentation too much, but do you have any statistics on how many appeals were granted during the last?
From, just off the top of my head, remembering it since we were deep into it, probably about 60% were granted. At that time, there were more extenuating circumstances that were considered, that we're not considering now. Landscape size was taken into account, which we're not looking at right now because we feel that that's where the major portion of conservation can come from, is the landscape.
That was 60%, a six-zero, right? Not one-six?
No, about 40% probably were denied, 60%. But there were a lot of, like I said, more, we've eliminated a lot of the reasons that we felt were not really at that, at this point. Maybe in '92 they were reasonable, that they aren't now.
Could you comment also on how the $50 fee was developed? Why $50 as opposed to something else? You're indicating that $50 is actually less than the cost you anticipated.
We just felt that any more would be, because if these people are exceeding this, and if they have an extreme excess, they probably are going to do it for more than one time. So they will be paying extreme penalties. So we're trying to make it as fair as possible. But also, someone who might have a $5 penalty would not put out $50 to get $5 back. So it was kind of weighing, we don't want to really overtax our customers, but at the same time, it needs to be such that we will cover some of our, and some of them may not require any, you know, if they have a reason that is not a qualified reason, then we can immediately deny it, so it wouldn't be the $50.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joy, for all the explanation. I can appreciate the utility's views on collecting the necessary amount of money to process the appeals. But I can also appreciate Commissioner Yao's sentiment on not penalizing the customer anymore, especially if it's a situation where we might have been able to do better, maybe whether it's outreach or education prior to the offense. So I'm hoping that if, even if we're restricted by returning the $50 to the customer, I'm hoping that we can do the necessary outreach and education, and whether it's through the internet, or bill inserts, or workshops, you know, I hope that we can get the message out clearly, so we can be notified ahead of time what the situation is with each and every individual household before we penalize them.
Mm-hmm. I might add that one of the outreach that we're doing right now is we've established what we call Conservation, Water Conservation 101 classes. We're offering these almost every Saturday morning and during the week on Thursday evenings, which we will be actually telling people what to expect when mandatory comes, how we envision that they will be able to reduce the 10% and give them some of the outreach. And we'll do it in other ways too, but this is one way. It's a two-and-a-half-hour class, and they can ask all the questions they want. So we're publicizing those, we're going to be offering those throughout the summer.
Okay.
What about, Ms. Joy, excuse me again, what about putting on the bill, so pretty much preempt what the conservation would look like in July or September? Would we be able to change our billing so that we can show clearly that 2006 usage was this much, and what 10% would be this much?
Absolutely. That's how the customers are going to be, announce to them what their goal is, and each customer will have an individual goal.
We have to see that before July 1st?
Yes.
Okay, so then maybe the next bill in May or June, they can see something?
Part of our, part of our effort has included a $50,000 retooling of the software to be able to print on each customer's account what their target would be for each of their next billing periods. So when you get a bill, I would say, for your next bill, your target is this much. And realizing that we still have manual meter reads in Glendale, we've prepared a brochure that, you know, if somebody were so inclined, they could actually follow their water use on a bi-weekly, weekly, or monthly basis, and see for themselves how they're tracking with respect to that target.
And that's part of the class, the 101 class. We're teaching people how to read their meters so that they can judge how much water they're using and where they can save to. We're going to do everything we can to help people because we really don't want people to go over. That's, the idea is, because when they go over, we may go over with our metropolitan allocation. So it's to, and for all of Southern California and California, we need to cut back on our water usage. So it's, you know, it's not like we're looking for penalties, we're not making money, this is not, we're not looking to make money on this. We're looking to encourage people to do the 10% cutback.
So with the billing change, will be able to see a preview of that in the next meeting or so, before the July 1st implementation date?
That's being worked on right now. In fact, this weekend, I was kind of putting together something that I thought might be interesting for people and give them some kind of an idea, idea what they're doing. We're looking at probably putting some kind of a chart as well as the text that says what they have. And it will be, the penalty will be a new line item on their bill. It will say penalty for excess of, if they do go over. So they will be able to pull that out of their bill, it won't be mixed with the rest of the costs.
Commissioner Yao, between now and July, we have the commission meeting of May and June. My understanding is that the software will be ready, the software improvements will be ready by July. Going out on a limb a little bit, because I'm not 100% certain, I would think we can show you something at the June meeting.
That'll be great.
We're hoping that we will have it, that our GWP people in the financial department are working on that right now. It has been given to our billing company, and they're working on the changes, but they don't like to go live, quote, until it's been tested. So that this point, I believe they're starting to test at the end of this month, and they hope that the testing will show that we can go live before July 1st, so that we can actually on the bill say, although penalties are not being applied, this would have been your goal, and you might have been over what, you know, and that how much, so next time. You have to also remember that we're not asking for any more conservation than we've been asking for for two years. And at the end of June of 2007, the city council asked for a 10% voluntary. So anyone who has met that 10% voluntary has no problem because that was also based on 2006 usage. So there may be people that have gone over, but if anyone who has tried to actually do this 10%, they're already there, and they won't have any problems.
Just another note, Commissioner Yao, you have a concern on something that's been a subject of significant discussion in-house, is whether that $50 processing fee should be refunded or not. If the commission would like us to, we can look at a different alternative where that would be refunded. We are still concerned, as we would recommend to you and the council, to be concerned about recovering the full cost of service. And we can come up with alternate ways. Ultimately, it's the same cost that needs to be recaptured. And if that cost is recaptured over fewer appeals, the cost of each appeal will end up going a lot higher. So if you'd like us to, we can come back with an alternate structure and recommend that to council as opposed to recommending a $50 non-refundable fee.
It sounds like can we as commission, when we hear an appeal, make that decision at that hearing to refund that applicant the $50 or not?
We would prefer to give you clear authority to do that. Our recommendation, as we're shaping it right now, is to put in a $50 non-refundable fee. In that case, you would not have that discretion. If you'd like to have that discretion, we'd have to come back with an alternate structure, and we'd be happy to do that. Just with a caveat, that if it is meant to capture full cost of service, it could end up being a much higher penalty.
I don't think it needs to capture the full cost of service. It seems like this is more a deterrent for frivolous appeals.
Well, that is part of the cause, part of the cause for having it. But cost of service is a significant concern for the utility.
Right. And I think it should be higher, if we're actually trying to capture the cost of service because we know a lot of utility services, even in appeals, should be a lot more than $50. So if this is more a deterrent, then I'd rather see that the applicant, if the appeal's successful, to return it.
Very well.
We can discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
We might look again at the other type of penalty, and that is We might look again at the other type of penalty and that is for non-compliance with the no water waste policy. At that point, again, we will have a notice to correct and then a first violation, second violation, third violation, and so on. We're going to be following the same penalty structure as the rest of the code follows. And at this point, I think it's 100 for first violation, 200 second, and 500 for third. And then we do have something that the rest doesn't have and that's the ability to put on the flow restrictor or to actually cut off their water service. It becomes a misdemeanor as far as that type of, with the code violation is concerned, that would become a misdemeanor as it does in the rest of the code violation ordinance elsewhere in the municipal code.
And before we actually put it on flow restrictions, are we, in your opinion, are we doing all we can before that actually happens?
Oh, absolutely. We are and hopefully, you know, someone gets a $500 penalty for, and as you will see with the matrix, these aren't, these aren't things that are difficult to do. If someone just continues to hose wash their driveway, whether we tell them not to or not, I would say that if they got $100 penalty for doing that, that that would be the end of that. We're hoping they would stop before we even have to penalize them. But these are things that are a waste of water and we're trying to stop the waste of water. And if someone has to decide whether they're going to flush their toilet or they're going to wash their driveway off or get $100 penalty for doing that, I, you know, I mean, we're looking at, for health and safety reasons, the amount of water people need to use, but not wastewater.
But do we have any triggers or like a financial debt before we actually put a restriction on it or even shut them off? Do we have, if they owe like $1,000 or $2,000 rather than $100? Because that sounds pretty low. Do we have any kind of financial metric or triggers before?
Now, the trigger is the number of times that they are in non-compliance or in violation.
So they could be owing us a few hundred dollars, but we still put a flow restriction on them?
If they continue to do it, after four times of someone, one of those restrictions, and again, like I said, they're not difficult to do. They're just an action that someone has to take. It isn't even asking them to cut back 10%. It's just an action they have to stop. And if they continue to do that four or five times, what they're doing is wasting water where someone else has already stopped after they were told they should not be doing it. So it isn't fair.
But I guess we're assuming that these people own their own homes. But what about renters and people who may not pay the water bill, may not see it and they continue to waste?
It will be given to the owner and it's the owner's obligation to make sure that that doesn't continue. And if the, you know, I mean, that, we have nothing to do with, between an owner and a tenant. But if the tenant continues and the owner gets the penalties, I would think they would pass it on to the tenant. But we, our only obligation is to put a penalty on the water user, whoever is our customer. We will send notices. We have gotten, and that's one thing that we've asked all the way along, is that if someone in the community sees water wasting going on, to call us and give us, you know, the address and everything, we send these people a notice, whether they are our water customer or whether they are a tenant of a water customer. If we can get the exact address, we will send a notice to them and then send also to the water customer or our customer, a notice that we've sent this and that this person is in violation of our code. So we're doing whatever we can, but this is not like someone using a lot of water in their home. This is actually someone whose action is in violation and they've been told.
Is it possible, it seems like it'll take place over a duration, maybe months before we actually restrict the water flow or shut them off. Is it possible to maybe come back to this commission with a list of people and then maybe discuss that at a 101 commission meeting before we actually start shutting them off?
Absolutely. We'll just, you know, again, we're hoping that before we even get to that, that it has ceased.
Just to clarify, so Commissioner, your proposal would be to modify the proposed ordinance so that before someone's flow restrictor could be installed, that it would have to come before you for hearing?
Yes, I would prefer that if possible. Not a hearing, but just to lay out the groundwork before we actually shut them off and maybe just get a consensus if we should proceed with the next step to actually restrict the flow.
Which would be a hearing before you because that would be, you know?
The way it's proposed in the, in the proposed ordinance is that if someone got to the point where they were going to have a flow restrictor or their water shut off, there would first be, we'd have to give them personal service of that notice. If we can't do personal service, we'd have to follow up with certified mail and post it so that they would absolutely be assured of having noticed the fact that their flow restrictor would be shut off. Then they would have the right to file an appeal. So at that point, it would come before you if the person objected to it and presumably anyone who was going to have a flow restrictor would. At that point, it would come before the commission for consideration. Is that, does that meet your needs?
As long as something is presented in front of us before we actually implement any kind of restriction or shut off.
What about the scenario where someone doesn't file an appeal? So if we were to post the notices, give them personal service, and they simply don't respond, in that case, I guess I'm having trouble seeing how that would-
That's what I would like to see that too, even though people haven't gotten a notice for whatever reason, that I would like to see that case presented in front of the commission before we actually implement it. I mean, it might be just the commission says that, go ahead and proceed with your shut off because the appeal hasn't taken place or that the person hasn't responded. It could be as simple as that.
So we could put it on the agenda and we could provide you with, you know,
The background.
The identity of the property.
We can change. Yeah, part of the clause says that if someone appeals, if it's in appeal procedure and the either flow restrictor or turn off of service is a portion of the penalty that we're saying would be assessed, that you would see it and that you, before this would happen, if there's an appeal and it would not happen until you made your decision. So it's put on hold, whereas a monetary penalty is not put on hold. Any kind of an action penalty is put on hold if they have appealed until you have made your decision.
If I may interject, I'm a little bit concerned about an additional bureaucratic step being put in if we allow people to, if we want to hear all the cases that would be shut off before they actually, before staff takes action. Because the commission meets only once a month. We could, you know, we have trouble meeting more often than that. And I think it's going to introduce a delay. I think the staff are present here every day. I think if we try to allow the staff to handle it at their level and then let the commission only be involved in the appeals process, I think that would be a more efficient use of time, not only for the city but for the customer. So that would be my suggestion.
I would also, I'm sorry, I'd also like to consult with our attorney prior to doing anything like that because of the privacy concerns.
Absolutely.
So, yes, I would agree. I think if we, if we choose to go down this particular path, I think we need to have some additional discussion over how we would implement such a thing and what restrictions we would have.
Yeah, and I'm just talking about the drastic step of actually reducing someone's flow. That's like shutting them off and they have no water. I mean, that's a dramatic, a drastic item we're undertaking. So it would be prudent for us to actually review it.
But we already have that with respect to things like cross connection control and other type of, yeah, right, non-payment and things of that nature. And the staff processes that without the commission ever hearing that in my experience.
I might point out to you, the first time a flow restrictor is put on, it's for 48 hours only. And then at that point, if they continued, and you know, I mean, being realistic, if you get to that point and somebody's put a flow restrictor on your system, I think that says, hey, we really mean it. So I can't see, and 48 hours is not that long for just a, you know, they still have water service. They just don't have as much flow as they normally do.
Before we move on and complete this section, I would like to point something out that you'll hear from me again and again. This is a very difficult subject for the water utility. We're in the business of providing reliable service to our customers all the time. That's what we're here to do. That's what we'd like to do. So as we move forward, we're finding ourselves, and as the general manager said, in extraordinary times. The Fallin Water District has not had a shortage allocation or a cutback of service for close to 20 years now. And our systems were designed to never do this. We were not in the business for shutting people off. We're in the business of providing our service as efficiently, as inexpensively as possible. And it is for us a very painful subject to have to come back to customers and say, you need to cut back. Don't use water this way. We'd like nothing better than to not have any of these in place. And a lot of these, for us, have represented a great struggle in trying to find a way to be equitable to all, to preserve the service and still have enough to go around and still recover cost. That is, that is a great consideration to all of us. We find ourselves having to call for 10% mandatory. That is a very, very difficult recommendation to have to make the city council. And the measures that go with it are what we feel is necessary to get us there. So please keep that in mind as we go forward with the proposed modifications to the code along with the rest of the discussion.
Do we have any data on what percent of services actually have flow restrictors put on them during the last round?
We didn't have any.
Okay.
We, with the, we were actually, went as far as 20% mandatory at that time. And the penalties that people received for excess use of water were what stopped everyone from not. And actually, at that time, we were so successful, we actually got 25%, although we were only asking for 20%. So the penalties were sufficient to-
I think, yeah, and I think that's testimony to the success of a progressive approach such as you outline here. Anyway, please proceed.
Well, that's why maybe my last comment was that because of that, we didn't have any restrictions or shutting people off, then it makes more of a prudent step for us to review one or two cases that actually maybe get shut off this time around. So that should be an option on the table.
Just two quick comments if I could interject. The first is that the flow restrictor provision is not new. That's something that's existing in the ordinance. As Mr. Steiger mentioned, there would be a potential concern with privacy in that utility records are private. And so we would have to explore how we could, how that would be possible, if at all, given that we can't just disclose someone's utility usage data without the permission. If they file an appeal and they proactively come to you and seek your review, that's one thing. But to just call out their address, their utility usage data-
Oh, no, I don't think we want to do that. Maybe just mention maybe there's one or two customers, maybe this month, that could face flow restrictions or shut off. And that could be enough for us to maybe look into it, saying, announcing that to the public, whoever they are, that there could be some restrictions or shut off if they don't respond to the utility.
We can give, we'll give you a report.
Yeah, we fully intend to make this a standing item on the commission when we get into mandatory. So you will be getting that report.
Yeah, and the hearing that we're talking about, that you would act as a hearing board, this is not a public hearing. This is a private hearing that would not be televised. It's something that if someone asks for a hearing, it's a private hearing. It's not public.
I have a question. This is for the benefit of all our customers. When you say the first, second, third violation and all, this is on the same offense, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. So let's say if the first violation is hosing down the sidewalk, that's, that's the one that, where you issued the notice to correct. And then after that, this customer have the sprinklers on between 9:00 and 4:00. So that's a different offense. Would that customer get the first violation or no?
They would get a notice of-
Another notice?
Yes.
So it's only on the same offense where they got to go three or four times before you put on the flow restrictor?
Not true.
Pardon? That's not the case. It is any violation of the water use restriction. So as you described, you know, the first time hose washing is your notice. The second time sprinklers on at the wrong time, that would be a first violation.
Right, yeah. I feel that's important to clarify to all our customers.
And when we issue the notice to correct, it's an educational type of notice. It's not just a notice that says you've been doing this and you have to correct it. We'll be sending a copy of the no water waste policy to them that lets them know, you know, that these are all restrictions they have to live by. They'll be told what would happen if they continue to do what they're doing. So it's, it's an educational type thing as well. And it will give us a chance to maybe mail out some tips for water conservation and so on. So it's not just a notice.
So that particular notice does not indicate what they did?
Oh, yeah, it will. There will be a letter that says what they did, but at the same time, we're going to send them-
Educational material.
All the other materials so that, you know, if, so they know that if they've done one thing and they want to do something else, that that's wrong also.
And that would result in a first violation and penalty? Okay, thank you.
I think probably that is, as far as the penalties are concerned, we've talked about the enforcement and that's the penalties are actually enforcement. One thing that we are proposing in addition to the municipal code is retrofit on resale. We have, and the water industry in a whole has determined where people can actually conserve water inside without really changing their way of life. And a couple of those things is by retrofitting a low-flow toilet and also a low-flow showerhead. And so we're asking, we have a lot, we have, we do water audits. And so we know people, the people who have and have not retrofitted their toilets, and that's one of the things that we encourage is that they retrofit these. So another way for us to find people that have not would be through resale. And it's going to, Christine has put together a portion of the municipal code that is strictly just for retrofit on resale. She can really kind of, if you want to know the details, she can let you know.
The other thing, is there a precedent for doing this? I mean, other cities are doing that too in the code?
It's, it's become a universal type of conservation method. And because the fact that it is so important, most every place actually gives rebate on low-flow toilets.
But this will be ongoing, not just doing terms of mandatory conservation?
Absolutely. And you can only purchase, and I believe it was in the early 90s, that's when the state put in the rule that you can only purchase low-flow, or low-flush toilets. And right now, there's a couple of bills being carried that would be a state, also a state legislative act that would reduce the amount. At that point, I believe it's three gallons. Right now, they're looking at even HETs, which are 1.2 gallon, to possibly, that they would, that was the highest gallonage that they could use in California or sell in California.
Okay, so this, this potential municipal code could be preempted by state law to implement the low flows?
It could, yeah. But as I said, this is, this is pretty well universally, plus the fact that one of the BMPs calls for that and for us to be in compliance with it, we need to do this. And also Metropolitan Water District's ordinance has said that. So this is something that we've put in there to be in compliant with the BMPs and with Metropolitan Water District ordinance.
Do we have the support of realtors or apartment managers on this? Or have we talked to them that they would be supportive?
We have not talked to them. And quite honestly, I would expect them to have, to express concern about this. We intend and have talked to Stuart Tom. He's the city's building official. And he's offered to coordinate meetings, and that's what the last bullet refers to, is to coordinate meetings with the Realtors Association that's been concerned about this, along with the apartment manager associations that might have an issue with it. And our intention is to explain to them that, you know, there's a lot of other requirements that go into the sale of a property. This is not, this is not an onerous requirement. It is not a high-cost requirement. And that the city would assist them in enforcing that and making it as easy as possible to enforce. I don't, I don't know if in the end they would come out supporting it, opposing it, or being neutral. But I do think that they view it as a problem.
Okay. Sounds like if we have some public comments in the end, we can address those.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, I had a question. The base here is 2006. And so suppose a family sold their house in 2007 and a larger family moved in that consumes more water or maybe somebody's parents moved in, they're aged, and the person has to take care of them or something like that. Is there a way to address that in the?
Yes, we've already looked at that.
Okay, so that we could prevent those appeals from happening at the outset?
Yeah, originally- Yeah, originally, we've looked at all different scenarios like that. One of the scenarios we've looked at is the fact maybe the building wasn't even, or the home wasn't even there in 2006. So, what we will do is we will look at an average usage for that type of customer, and that would be the original allocation they would be given. But we're hoping if something like that has changed, and with the education that we do beforehand, that someone would call us and say, "Oh, you know, this has changed, and our water uses have changed." And that is one of the reasons for an appeal and also for accepting an appeal.
So, there's a procedure in place for people to call in and explain these situations?
Yeah, our billing system has already looked at that.
And we've advertised that?
We will.
Okay.
Joy, to clarify, would that apply if, is my understanding that would apply if the apartment or the, I'm sorry, the building were vacant? But if in fact there were less occupants and then there were subsequently more occupants, that would be a ground for appeal?
Or a ground for appeal, but like I said, we're hoping that may...
It would be an automatic adjustment.
Yeah. No, the automatic, the average would be if it were vacant or if it wasn't there. But the grounds for, one of the, or actually, two of the grounds for appeal. One is a increase in the number of, if it's multifamily, number of occupants, or single-family number of residents. If you brought an elderly person in who, and health, health is one of the reasons that we look at an appeal, that maybe they have to have laundry done four times a day for them or something like this, something that we will look at.
All right. And then another question here, penalty water for exceeding one's allowance in the tiers, does that go into the adjustable rate? Or do we have a way of accounting for that? In other words, we have, we have a certain cost associated with running the business, and then there's this penalty allocation that's associated with the met sales. And so, when we get money from our customers, when they've exceeded their allocations, does that penalty water go into the penalties that we would be paying?
The dollars?
Yeah, the adjustable...
Where are we going to put the dollars?
Yeah.
Commissioner Miller, because of Prop 218 restrictions, it's difficult to do that in that way. What we're looking at is a regulatory fee, which is designed to encourage people not to waste water, not to overuse water. The money that is collected will be used to, for enforcement of the chapter and for water conservation education and things of that nature.
Okay. Another set of questions I have, we still have our water audits going on, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then you alluded to that. Do we have flow restriction devices that are made available to people, let's say, low-flow showerheads and things like that? Are we doing that in this, as a utility providing those?
Actually, we, Metropolitan Water District was providing the rebate on things like this. The low-flow showerheads, we actually, when we go in to do a water and energy audit, our people actually install low-flow showerheads free of charge to our customers.
Okay.
They are, there's, they put aerators free of charge. As far as the electric side's concerned, they will wrap a water heater if it's not wrapped. There's many things that we will do free of charge to our customers when we go in and do our water and electric audits.
All right. And how does one initiate an audit like that for the benefit of anyone who's watching on TV right now?
They can call our 548-3300 number, and those people can give them the phone number to call to make an appointment.
Okay, that's 548...
It's done on appointments. We have a outside vendor that's been working with us for almost five years now, and they do all those for us.
Okay, that's 548-3300.
Right. I might add also, hopefully by your next regular meeting, we will be able to give you a special phone number that we're setting up. We're calling it our water conservation hotline. And that will be a special number that anyone who has any questions or reporting water waste, or if they're asking for an appeal or anything like that, will actually be able to call this. And this will be strictly set up just for the water conservation. And right now, we're having it set up, but we don't have the number yet.
On the issue of enforcement, how are we doing that? Are we just relying on the citizenry to report water abuse?
That's one of the reasons why we set up this notice to correct before we actually did a violation. If it is reported by a citizen, then we will actually have an investigation done by a city of Glendale employee. And before a violation will be called, there will be an investigation that will verify that this is what's happening. If a city of employee, and we've asked all of our city of employees and all the departments, if you see water wasting going on, let us know. If it's a city of Glendale employee who reports it, we will still send out the notice to correct. But at that point, it has been investigated. So, when the, if they do it again, that first violation will all have, already be a verified violation.
So, we have active surveillance by Glendale Water and Power employees and other city employees on this issue?
Anyone who's out there and they see any kind of water and a city employee, we've asked them, please, to report that.
Including the police department and, okay. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
I have a question here. I noticed that you have not made any distinction between residential and commercial customers. When you mentioned the violation, it's 100 for first violation, 200 second, and 500 for third. Have you looked at the differences between residential and commercial? Have you considered different violation amounts for the different groups? And if not, why not?
We, the penalties are different as far as there, we've set a base amount of water that we will not penalize as far as the excess usage is concerned. Anyone who uses 10 units of water or less per month for a single family, or that would be 20 because they're bimonthly billed, we won't ask them to reduce their water usage. So, say they use 10 in '06, and 10% would be 9. We will not ask them to use that, so they will not be penalized. We've set up a base for the multifamily of 20 units per month because we realize that there's more people using water. For the commercial and industrial, we're looking at a base, but it's going to be, those will have to be looked at on an individual basis because there is process water in many of the businesses. Process water at this point will not be asked to reduce at all for the 10% reduction. As far as the no water waste policy is concerned, if you look down those, there's no reason why any business or commercial industry, or anyone would exceed, would not be in compliance with those because they're all, they're not the type of, that would have anything to do with the business itself. And there is an exception to that, and that's if, and most of those have an exception, that if it is for health and safety reasons, say if they have to wash down a driveway because there's oil on it or something like that, that that has taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Oh, now, one more thing. You mentioned that you will be setting up the residential hotline and...
It's actually, it's not just for residents. It's a hot, it's a water conservation hotline. Anyone can call.
Okay. And you're in the process of staffing that, you mentioned?
Actually, it will go into our regular call system, but it will be, come in on a different line. That way, we can keep track of, right now, although they try to keep track of it, sometimes we don't have that. But if someone uses that, then it'll be much easier for us to track that. And at the same time, there will be a message on it that if someone needs to leave a message after hours or so on, that where we don't staff our regular system except from 8:30 to 5:00. So, this would be, have a message on it that they could leave a message, and then we would pick it up.
I'm going down the path of staffing right now. For instance, staffing this hotline will require additional personnel. Answering the huge amount of calls after we implement this mandatory 10% conservation will be a lot. And then there's additional work for outreach and processing that possible appeals and all that. What are we doing in terms of staffing or plans to staff?
Well, I put, I put together a preliminary budget for that. And I'm looking at, it's starting with a half-time, part-time person to train before we actually expect any appeals to start. So, that person would be ready to do that. I have, actually, I'm looking at staffing three part-time with one who could become a full-time. So that we aren't going, we're going to use as needed when it comes in. We don't want to put out any more staff budget than we have to because at this point, you know, the city and we too are in, as far as the crunch, as far as employment is concerned and the budget. So, we're being as proactive as can be, but at the same time, you know, not overly doing it. As far as the phone number is concerned, right now, it goes into our regular system. It will be picked up by our regular call center people. If the, if the volume becomes so great that it is a hardship to them and they can't get the regular work done, then I have asked that that phone number be able to be transferred to our office where one of our part-time people would answer it instead. So, we're looking at being able to ramp up as necessary.
Uh huh. The city of Glendale does not have a hiring freeze yet?
The city of Glendale does have a hiring freeze.
Does, yes, I thought.
And GWP is in compliance with that freeze. So, we have no plans on hiring any new full-time employees for this purpose.
Oh, okay. That's why we're talking about part-time?
That's correct.
And maybe temp agency, people like that.
Okay, thank you.
So, at this point, if there are no further questions or discussions on the proposed changes to the municipal code, I was going to take a little bit of your time and talk about the finances of the utility and what we see coming down the road.
Well, before we proceed, I think there's some members of the public who want to make some comments. Do you want to do that first, or do you want to wait towards the end? I suggest you fill out some blue cards, or do you have any, if who wants to come up and speak? You submit the blue cards. Go ahead and give it to Sheila.
I think we were going to meet them. We thought we were just gonna get them, so...
What, what about the gentleman over there?
We have about 15 slides to present to you as far as the financial impact.
Yeah, let's complete this one first, and you can just return the blue card to Sheila. Oh, if you have completed, just please bring them up to Sheila to, just submit it to her as you finish. Mr. Cavounas?
Thank you. If I can have the lights dim? Thank you very much. Wanted to give you a little bit of background on the finances of the utility because they do come into play in terms of mandatory conservation. Wanted to describe for you the existing rate structure that the utility has to collect revenue. There's two components to our rates. One is the base rate component. The other one is the adjustable rate component. The base rate component has a, has a meter charge, which is simply dependent on the size of meter serving a property. And it has a commodity charge, which is a per-unit charge, and it does have two tiers. Tier one, which is a lower charge for the first 1000 cubic feet, and a tier two, which is higher than that. The combined, the meter charge and commodity charge make up the base rate. And the base rate is there to recover fixed expenses for the utility. The adjustable rate is there to recover expenses incurred, the equivalent in electric would be a fuel, fuel charge. In water is the expense for purchasing water from Metropolitan Water District, electricity, as well as third category, which is groundwater cleanup in the San Fernando Basin. Any costs that we, that the city incurs are accumulated there. The adjustable rate is recalculated every six months to recalculate the per-unit charge.
Mr. Cavounas, if I could just interrupt, just to clarify, the tier one and tier two related to the base rate are not conservation-related, is that correct? That's, that's built into the rate structure?
That is, the existing rate structure is built in. It does reflect, this rate structure was established, I think, in the 90s, reflecting what was the collective understanding of best practice at the time, where lower usage is rewarded by having a lower tier, and higher usage is incentivized to cut back by paying a little bit more per unit.
Thank you.
This slide shows the actual charges. The meter charge varies by the size of the meter. I think a one-inch meter and less, which is a typical residential, is about $11 per month. That's a flat charge. And as we project out in time, that will not change until, I believe, January 1st of 2010 is when it's slated to, has been approved by council to increase. The commodity charges, that's still part of that base component. The first tier, right now, is being charged at 72 cents for 1000 cubic feet. That's 750 gallons, so that's a pretty good deal. And that's slated to, that increased to 73 cents in January of 2009, slated to stay at 73 cents for the next, for July 1 and January 1. Our adjustments come on January and July. Tier two is, was increased from $1.29 to $1.45 in January of '09, and it's slated to increase again in January of 2010 to $1.57. Again, that's independent of conservation. That is, that is what's on the books right now. City council approved a three-year rate increase a year and a half ago, and that's what these, that's what these prices reflect.
Excuse me, Peter. You mentioned that the meter charge will be changed January 2010?
Correct.
What do you think that'll be?
Um...
Currently at 11?
Let me avoid guessing. See if I happen to have that with me. I don't have that with me. It was probably going to go to around $12 per month, but don't quote me on that. That's a guess. Robert, do you happen to have that?
We're talking about 10, 20%? No more than that?
Yeah, I believe, I believe it's less than that, yeah.
Less than that, okay.
Yeah. And that's, you know, there's a balance between meter charges that are flat and fixed each month and commodity charges. From a utilities' point of view, the meter charge gives us revenue that we can count on month in and month out.
Right.
Whereas opposed to the commodity charge is volatile. It varies according to the volume of sales. Ideally, the utility would like to have 100% predictable income. So, we'd like to have everything on the meter charge. From a, from a point of view of giving pricing signals to customers, ideally, you'd have everything on the variable. So, it'd be the exact opposite. Best management practice is to have about 20% of revenue derived from the meter charge and 80% of the revenue derived from commodity charge. And we're striving to get to that balance a little bit more by increasing, as you can see, we're increasing that as opposed to an increase of the tier two, which is not quite as much. And we're still trying to strike a greater incentive by keeping tier one relatively flat so that the commodity increases in tier two. The adjustable rate that's shown was $1.27 in July 1 of 2008. It was decreased to $1.20 in January 1 of 2009. And the reason that was decreased to $1.20 is we have a reserve account that's called the rate stabilization fund, and we try to keep a balance of $1 million in that account. If we over-collect, then we lower the rate, which is the case of what happened in January 2009. If we're under-collected, we raise the rate. And the idea is to try to strike a balance without changing the rates too much between the monies that we spend for purchased water and electricity and the monies that we collect for that account. So, what you see here is $1.20 in July 109 and January 1 2010, that is subject to that recalculation that will be done on a six-month basis. We're not saying that that will stay flat. We're saying that that's where it's at now, and it'll change.
When do you do the recalculation?
It'll be done in June.
Okay, thank you.
So, in June, we'll have, will change to, effective in July 1. A snapshot of the operating results of the utility, actual '07, '08, projected '08, '09, and the budget for '9, '10. In terms of net income, we're, we're looking at a bit of a reversal of fortune in '9, '10 for a couple of reasons. You see, our net income is negative, is projected to be negative. The reason for that is twofold. One is, we're assuming for fiscal year '9, '10, a reduction of sales of about 5%... One is we're assuming for fiscal year '09, '10, a reduction of sales of about 5%. That gives us lower revenue. And we're also reflecting what we know to be true now and hope will change, is the state of California has withdrawn a $2.5 million grant that they had committed to, but along with everybody else, our little grant went out the door. We do believe that that grant will get reestablished. And at the time, we received the news on the grant being withheld, we had committed to the contractor to proceed with the construction of chromium removal demonstration facilities. This is an ongoing research project that the city has taken on. We're leading the nation in the research for chromium removal. In addition to really wanting that effort to come to a conclusion and having committed to the consultant and contractor in, by signing a contract, we felt we would actually incur more expense and incur a delay that was not appropriate. So we went ahead and we're showing it as an expense, as a capital expense. But the revenue was reduced by the $2.5 million we got a hat. If our sales were par and, and the grant was there, we would have positive net income for the year. We're showing also, for educational purposes, that since we issued a bond in February of 2008, we now have debt service as part of our financial picture and that kicked in in '08, '09. And then as a result, we are now mindful of our, of our status as a borrower and are showing the debt service coverage ratio, which is required to be 1.25 times the debt service. And we're showing that in the budget year '09, '10, we're dipping, but we're still above the required ratio. Our rating is a double A. Now, you take that budget, that last slide here shows you the budget of '09, '10. If you just look at that budget of '09, '10 and call that normal, that's shown in the, on the left side under budget. That's '09, under normal circumstances. What this slide shows is what a mandatory conservation level of varying stages according to the ordinance would look like. If you look at the customer charge, that remains flat because if somebody has a meter, they're paying a flat charge. Tier one is not affected by conservation. The impact is in tier two and tier two is where revenue declines progressively more as conservation gets into greater percentages. So the base revenue, the bottom line shows base revenue declining by about $1 million or two in subsequent phases as mandatory conservation gets progressively worse. Again, what we're looking at recommending to council this year is a 10% conservation level. But in any case, you look at the total net results, the, I want to draw your attention to the, you have the, change from the budget is $1 million in 10% mandatory, goes to about three, it goes to about five and goes, it gets worse from there. And that's, that's showing both base as well as adjustable overall. You also see that in 10% mandatory, we drop from 1.8 times down to 1.4, still above the 1.25 covenant ratio, but, but getting awfully close. If we had to go to 20%, this shortfall in, in base revenue would bring us well below and that would be a real cause for, for concern and immediate action. From a utilities' financial management perspective, when a, when a reduction in revenue can be forecast, it's prudent to put a mechanism in place to do something about it. You can't go to your creditors and say, "We're managing a good utility, but we didn't really do anything about it knowing that our revenue would go down." This is a graphic representation just showing that gap increasing between revenue and base expense. So what options do we have in terms of closing that gap? We can modify the existing rate structure. We can adopt a whole new rate structure altogether that accounts for conservation or take no action. I put that up as sort of the sequel alternative of saying no action, but you know, from a, from a management point of view, that's really, we would recommend strongly against that. Modifying the existing rate structure is a very common approach. What, what utilities have done is to create an additional stream of revenue that closes that gap and maintains neutral revenue. And it's something that goes into effect only when mandatory conservation is in effect. Typically, it's done through an extra charge. Los Angeles is looking at having something like that. Las Vegas is an example that just came across my desk and so I included in the slide, exact same thing. You add a charge. And the interesting thing is if you look at the billing, the rate structure, the way that works is that operates only on the base revenue, which is the portion that declines. The net effect for a customer is actually if they meet their conservation target, the adjustable portion of their bill goes down, so their overall bill would actually go down. From a utilities' point of view, we're interested in preserving base revenue, so that extra charge preserves base revenue. In terms of new rate structures, again, our tier structure was considered to be the right thing to do at the time when it was put in place. It still is the right thing to do, although there are other structures that are considered by utilities now. Some include seasonal rates where the price of water goes up in the summer. Some have more tiers than we have. They go to four, five tiers. I think Irvine has five or six tiers and their highest tier goes up to $8 per HCF. Some consider having the breakpoints between tiers change as phases of conservation change. And some are going to the new in way of budgeting both water and money, which is to create water budget-based rates, which is to come up with an amount of water that is reasonable for a person to use and then go customer by customer and say, "If you have so many people living at your home, you get this much water for indoor use. If your lot is this size, you get this much water for external use. That is what your water budget is." And then the charges come related to that, again with intent of recovering the whole cost of the utilities' operation. Very data-intensive. If we were to adopt a new rate structure, the, oh, I was going to say, another model is followed, is our rate structure was, was proposed a long time ago and then rate increases would be proposed sometimes annually, sometimes not at all. The last time we proposed them was for three years after a six-year hiatus of any rate increases. And I believe Commissioner Yao and Commissioner Miller were here when we did that. Other agencies do year by year. They go to their approving authorities and they say, "Our next year's budget is X amount of dollars. Our projected sales is this many units and therefore our rate for this coming year should be that much." So there's the annual forecast, which is a slightly different way than what we currently do. Seeing all the different rate structures that are out there, seeing the strengths and the weaknesses of what we have, our plan was to come back next year and propose a slightly different rate structure than what we have right now. That's not to say that we couldn't do it sooner. Our plan was to let the three-year rate increase go into effect next year, the third of three years, and then at the end of that period of time, come back with a new overhaul structure at the end of that time. The third option that we see as not really an option is to let, let the revenue shortfall be created, deplete reserves and then drop our debt service coverage ratio. We can't recommend that. I mean, we're, it's not our job to recommend something like that. Our recommendation is for you to consider is option one, which would be to modify the existing rate structure by adding some kind of a charge, call it a water shortage charge, that kicks into effect only when conservation's in effect and is targeted to close the gap between base revenue and base expense at that time. This is not being proposed to council at this time. The only thing that we're proposing to council is the modifications to the ordinance. What we'd like to do is have you consider the options for recovering revenue. Let us develop and come back to you with some kind of a mechanism and then after that, we take it to council.
Yeah, I have a question. These charts that you presented?
Yes.
Looking at the financial chart, these are the projections based on our last rate change. It was three years ago. For budget year 2009, '10, we are showing a loss of...
Net income loss, yes.
Right, net income loss of over $3 million.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Okay, and, and this is aside from conservation impacts?
Yes.
Right?
Actually, not entirely.
Not entirely?
When we budgeted for '09, '10, our budget is, is fresh and right now going through the approval process. We assumed a 5% reduction in sales. So that's reflected in the revenue is a, is a 5% reduction in sales.
Okay, so I understand that we cannot change the, the rate structure immediately. What are we doing at the current time to mitigate this $3 million loss projection?
Well, our plan would be to, well, of course, we're, everything we can to keep our expenses as low as possible. That's first course of action. And I believe we're lockstep in with the city's overall cost containment effort. But our plan is to tap into reserves, to take, to fund our operations.
If you recall, Peter mentioned that the biggest single issue here is the, the fact that we're not receiving $2.5 million from the state of California. We fully expect to, to receive that later this year. However, in order to budget properly, we've budgeted to not show that. So, so $2.5 million out of the 3.1 is expected to be recommitted. The, the rest of that is associated with the fact that we fully expect, as Peter said, a 5% decrease. However, we also fully expect at some point to come back to you, and that's one of the reasons that Peter's giving the overall presentation, with a proposal to become revenue-neutral in that regard to make up for that. So, so there's really a number of strategies that are part of reversing that 3.1 negative number. We don't expect to actually see that. However, if nothing is done, if nothing occurs from this day forward through that budget year, then we would have a $3.1 million deficit.
Right, which I, I feel is unacceptable. The 2.5 million grant, okay, we, we will try to get that. However, I don't think we can bank on that. So as you indicated, I think the scenarios, you know, that we're going to need to come up with has to consider the possibility of not getting that. For, for instance, the utility operations, are we cutting as much as possible?
Yes.
Waste, eliminate waste, maybe unnecessary professional services, materials and...
We've cut back substantially on overtime, a number of areas.
Overtime?
Yes, yes, we've done that. We're, we've, in fact, we've already implemented most of that.
And including increasing our vacancy rate, which helps keep...
Right, we're freezing, having the hiring freeze. So even after all that effort, we are still looking at this net loss? Okay.
Now, again, in terms of conservation, what we're suggesting that needs to be done doesn't necessarily address this head-on. What we're looking at is on a programmatic basis, if we have conservation, mandatory conservation, then we can reliably predict a shortfall in operating revenue. In this case, what, what this shows you is the 5%. But if you, if you look at on a, on a going-out basis, if we go into 10% mandatory, it's actually going to be a little bit worse, but predictably so. If it were a 20% mandatory, it would be even worse and...
In terms of the loss?
In terms of the loss of revenue, right. And so, you know, we can, we can tighten up our belt as much as we can, but fixed expenses are fixed expenses. And, you know, our, our suggestion is that the utility for, to be managed properly needs to have a mechanism, that if you can predict a loss, you need to have a predictable mechanism that recovers the cost.
Let's see, on the issue of cutting expenses, I think it might be helpful if we had a, well, first let me ask, what's your schedule for, for making a suggestion to council on rate modification? Were you looking at doing that in the summer?
No. We have, the council has approved a three-year rate increase, the last, the third of three years is, goes into effect in January of 2010. And we want to just leave it alone through 2010.
Okay.
So our proposal would be to start the discussion probably in the summer of 2010.
Obviously, cutting expenses is the first thing one would look at and obviously you've done that. I think it would be helpful if we had more detailed discussion maybe at the next commission meeting about the options or the consequences of maybe cutting expenses in your O and M program or capital. Is it the case that reductions in capital would not help here because it's tied into your creditors? That your creditors have a schedule for construction and if you violate that, your, your credit goes, gets shot, I take it?
Pretty much, yeah. You're well familiar with utility finances, you know. And we've borrowed money, we're spending that money on capital. We actually need to spend that money on capital.
So any savings has to come from the O and M budget? Okay.
Our O and M budget is, if you look at it in terms of components, unless we can talk the electric system and giving us a discount, well, actually even that wouldn't help because that goes in the adjustable. You know, it's chemicals, it's salaries, and again, our FTEs haven't changed in three or four years, our bodies, so our vacancy rate is increasing a little bit.
It might be helpful though to have those components broken up and, and we could have a more informed discussion of what the consequences would be if we were to cut back more or something like that. Because right now, the discussion is, can't proceed very far because we don't know what the consequences would be on, on the various parts. Is, I suppose as part of the way of addressing this, altering the tier schedule in your base rate might be another tool you could use to help accommodate your revenue, to make it meet your expenses. Is that something that will be looked at or...
If, you know, we, we would propose, our recommendation is to go with option one. But we're very open and we're looking for your guidance. If, if you'd like us to look at that, we can look at that. And, and the way that would be is, is you could either introduce another tier or introduce a tier three, let's say, at 10% conservation and then maybe a 20% conservation, the breakpoints between the tiers slide back a little bit. That, that's definitely an option we can do. It's a little more intensive in terms of developing it in short-term and implementing it in short-term. The simplest to develop and implement short-term would be that additional charge. But, you know, we're open. If you think that works better, and that's what we're here for today, we want to hear what you think would be best.
How far along are you in terms of going for option one? Implementing that additional charge?
You know, the calculation is very simple. It's, you take that shortfall and you divide it by the projected units. And so we have a, we have a, an estimate of what the charge would be.
And you would charge customers by the, okay, amount that they exceed it?
We would actually charge every customer that's in tier two a little bit. So it would not affect tier one. So those that are not using a lot of water would not, would not pay. And we feel that, that has an element of equity and justice in it. It's that tier two that would help us recover the shortfall in the O and M account.
So we're looking at a higher number than, let's say, the 1.45?
Yes, it would be above the 1.45, right.
Do we know about approximately a big amount of increase?
I can give you, I'd be happy to give you an idea of what that would look like. Let me see if I can manipulate. There's a slide that, that might show you. I mean, we had developed these just for talking points. Again, we're not, we're not saying this is the only way to go. We're saying it's a simple way to go that would be quicker to implement. It would, it would give us the ability to remain revenue-neutral. It would not affect those that use lesser amounts. And... And importantly, those that reduce their consumption to the requested amount would actually pay a lower bill. That seems counterintuitive, and that's why I felt there was a point that needs to be included. Those that do not reduce consumption would pay higher bills. And a sample calculation is what we call the typical residential customer in Glendale, that's that average of 22 HCF per month. If they did not conserve in a 20% mandatory conservation, twice the level of what we're proposing, could pay as much as $7 per month more for this extra water shortage charge.
What would be the 10%?
So here's, here's a table, and I apologize, there's just no good way to show this on one slide and have it totally visible on TV. But, so let me just walk you through these numbers. You see that the top row is the monthly charge, that doesn't change. The base rate again has the two tiers. Tier one would not change regardless of the phase of conservation. Tier two would not change, but this is where the new charge would come in. There would be an additional 24 cents per HCF if you were in 10% conservation. It would be 57 cents, and these are rounded off to four decimals. At 20%, it would be a 57 cents per charge. The adjustable would remain as it is. And if you take that typical, single-family residence monthly bill, assuming that they conserve, a customer paying $62 now for 22 HCF would actually pay $58 if they had conserved, in spite of the fact that they would be paying an additional 24 cents for tier two. And again, the reason that is, is because if they use, if they conserve, the adjustable rate collects less for them because they pay that over a lower amount. So if you add these two together with conservation, that remains flat, this portion goes down. As a result, the total bill goes down. And the total bill, if we were to go into a 20% conservation, would actually go down even more if the customer conserves. But this structure allows us to collect this component and close the gap I was showing you in that, in the early charts and graphs. So that's just, that's just one of the options. Again, the calculation is simple, and it's the only reason we've done it, because it was, this is simply adding up that shortfall and dividing it by the billing units, and that's what you have.
And for an average, single-family resident in Glendale, how many HCF would you say they use per month?
22.
22.
And that's what the bottom line, that's what the bottom line reflects, is like 22 HCF.
Okay, so if it's normal, they're being charged 12 in tier two?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like to chime in. I think this is actually a much easier and probably more rational method than altering the tiers, which is the only other thing I could think of offhand. If you succeed in universal conservation, if everybody saves 10%, and the customers realize this reduction, what's that going to do to your discrepancy between your expenses and revenue? It's still going to be positive, right? There's still going to be a revenue less than the expenses?
For this coming year?
Yeah.
For the, yeah, for this coming year, well, we've assumed a 5% reduction. So if we had a, some kind of a charge to recover, we would recover some of that reduction in revenue. The $2.5 million, we still need to, we need to press for help with the state and with our legislators, and intend to do that. But that would help us close the gap for 910 to some extent. And it's about a million dollars that's at play because of the revenue shortfall, because of the lower sales.
That's reflected near 3.1 million?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I see, I see.
And what Peter has shown you here is our recommendation to the commission. But what we wanted to do was have a discussion over the various options and not assume that this would be the path that you choose. But this would be our recommendation. We think this is the fairest way to go.
Well, Mr. Kabounis, what is, in your opinion, the favored long-term option? Would it be a tier structure rate rather than this simplified version of conservation?
You know, the best option, of course, from our point of view, is one that not only recovers the utility's expenses, because that allows your utility to function. But it's also one that provides fairness and equity among all the residents. And fairness and equity is a very difficult subject. There are some people that'll say, hey, I have a nice, big yard, I'm willing to pay whatever you want for water, just give me the water. There's others that would say, we don't have enough water to go around, you don't get it for your big yard. So that's one philosophical battleground. There's others that say, you know, everybody should pay regardless of their economic status. And I think as a society, we've come to a point where we're saying, you know, there's got to be a level below which we assist. That's the power of being a collective, is we assist those that have lesser means. And I think that's something we've all settled on and agree on. There's a collective thought that in tier one, if people use a nominal amount of water, that we as a society have an obligation to provide that. And that should be there, and that should not be exorbitantly priced. And then, of course, there's the overall concept that your bill ought to be fairly easy to understand. So for somebody that is in our line of work, in the utility work, gas, electric, water, I mean, we can take a utility bill and understand it, maybe no matter how complicated it gets. And maybe, as left-brain people, we have a tendency for data. But maybe not so for the average customer. And so, there's, there's a lot to be said about the simplicity of a bill that has, here's the first level, your allotment for tier one, anything over that is too much, here's a tier two. Maybe, hey, you go into tier three because that's excessive. That, to me, is a good blend. From an ideal point of view, a water-based budget would probably be better to where you look at each individual customer. That has all, all sorts of challenges that go with it, the least of which is the data intensity and the continuous change in the database that you'd have people calling you saying, hey, my mother-in-law moved in, my daughter went to college, my daughter's back from college, you know, this goes on and on and on and on. You're constantly subtracting and adding. So there's a balance to be had, and every community, every utility needs to settle down on whatever it prefers. Our hope was that next summer, we'd bring to you a full discussion of options, and we'd say, here's the tiers that we have. Irvine, for example, has been successful with conservation, and this is what they've done. Pasadena has done this, and here's their options. And we could do these three options, and this is what they would look like. And then, let you and let the council choose. Again, from our point of view, we need, we're trying to meet everybody's needs and recommend to you that you recover revenue.
We have just two more issues before we move on. One of them is low-income customers, and the other one is the tenant-owner or renter scenario. Because we're talking about single-family residences using, I think, 22 HCF per month. But I go back to the point where these renters who might not understand the conservation concept, where the owner's paying for the water bill and they might not see it. So how do we deal, because I imagine maybe 60% of, or more of the residents is owned their homes and live in them. But the other 40 or 50% could be renters who may not see the impact of these rates unless they get into the rent. So how do we deal with such a situation where we're assuming that these revenues and everything on conservation is based on single-family owner-livings rather than renters? How do we accommodate for the renters who might not know what's going on with the water conservation?
Well, we are targeting everyone with an extensive conservation outreach effort. And our intention is to enhance that conservation effort from now until July 1, so that nobody living in Glendale can actually say, I had no idea that there's a drought, I had no idea that there's conservation that's required. And then, there's renters in single-family homes, renters in multi-family units. At some point, owners of multi-family unit buildings will have to do the direct communicating. There's a relationship between them and their tenants, and they'll have to, they'll have to prevail on them to conserve through whatever means they see as appropriate. From our point of view, we are allowing a floor below which what we think is reasonable use is not impacted by mandatory conservation. As Joey mentioned, below 10 HCF, below tier one, you wouldn't have to conserve.
Whoever's multi-units or apartment buildings, I mean, shouldn't that level be higher than 10?
And it is. And it is. It's 20.
Does the owner, the apartment owner know that, that they can, that's where the base is before they can get a penalty?
And that would be reflected in their bill, yes.
Okay. What about just two units, five units, or 100 units? I mean, how do you manage that base?
We don't right now. Right now, what we have is the, the floor is 20 billing units, 20 HCF for a multi-family unit. Now, realistically speaking, multi-family building, their usage has probably not changed a whole lot because it's almost all indoor usage. So, you know, I mean, that, that's a fairly constant bill, and we don't see that as one of those that's going to be a great abnormality in the overall system. The overall system, like you said, is single-family homes and their consumption.
Something to keep in mind, and it's one of the benefits we have of being a municipal electric and water utility, and that even though we have a number of multi-family units here in Glendale, just about every single renter is an electric customer of GWP. And our outreach goes out universally to all of our electric customers, which includes the water conservation education. So while we have about 88,000 electric customers versus 35,000 water customers, every one of those 88,000 customers will have the educational outreach to them. So even though renters may not be paying directly in terms of their water bill to GWP, they will be interacting directly with GWP on our outreach.
I was considering something more like a mini-submeter where we can individualize that, so people see the impact to their bill, and they can pretty much react to the financial indicators. So is there a way we can assist or incentivize those type of submetering?
We actually have that in the municipal code, where apartment buildings, every unit, be it single-family or otherwise, needs to be individually metered in the city of Glendale. And we consistently receive requests from the developers who don't like that requirement, and they would like exceptions. It's an additional cost to build a building, and, you know, developers prefer not to have to pay that.
Will we offer some kind of incentive to put those in?
Well, we say it's in the code. That ought to be enough incentive. But we do, we try to make their life a little bit easier, trying to be as accommodating as we can within, within what's the right thing to do, is apartment buildings that are more than 50 units are the ones that we'll consider a submetering system, where the, the units are built, served by a master meter, or two or three, however many are necessary to provide enough flow. And then, the owner will have submeters going to each individual apartment. And our requirement is that that data be reported to the utility so that we at least keep track of the consumption by individual unit. But we don't read bill-collect each one of them. We read bill-collect the master meters.
This is my, my last issue is the low-income customers. We know we have the electric side, the care program that just started. Are we doing something similar to the water side, or do low-income customers get additional $10 a month grant on their bill?
I believe they do, yeah.
So the electric side?
Well, it's a $10 subsidy on their bill from GWP.
I thought that was for electric, and then, there's no $10 separately for the gas? Is that what you're saying? I mean, not gas, water?
There are restrictions on, for water rates. You have to charge the proportional cost to each customer. You can't have customers subsidizing other customers because of Prop 218. So it's difficult to set up that kind of a rate structure.
Well, it sounds like it's not really subsidizing, it's part of the PBC where the electric side, you get, the low-income customers get the $10 per month, or was it 12, whatever it was? So couldn't we...
My impression is that if you're an electric customer, you're also a water customer.
Right.
And so, you got the $10.
Oh, not really, because the electric customer could be tenants or multi-unit residences.
So they got the $10?
Yeah. And so, if the owner of a multi-unit complex has one water meter, but the tenants are low-income, couldn't that apply to their subsidy or type of assistance? Or does it just apply to electric?
Well, it applies, my understanding is that it applies to every customer. So if you're an electric customer, you get a $10, at low income, you get a $10.
On the electric bill? Because they get separate bills?
And you don't get a water bill. Or if you get water and electric, you still get $10.
Okay, so...
You get $10 if you're low-income. If you're on the system as electric-only, water-only, water and electric, you get $10.
Well, assuming that since we're implementing these mandatory conservation and our revenue could be impacted by it, what is the additional PBC or otherwise, other charges where we can enhance our low-income customers' ability to pay by giving them a subsidy, if you call it, or just a helping hand?
Let me, let me address that. Right now, the PBC only applies to electric because it's a charge that's on the electric side. We are considering, as the state of California is considering for that matter, instituting a PBC-like charge on the water side. We've not done that yet. It may be something we do, and that would be the means that we'd be able to provide additional subsidy for low income. Currently, there's no other means of providing that subsidy. But to put it in context, when we initiated the Glendale Cares Program a few months ago on the electric side, what it did was it expanded the coverage of our low-income program to approximately 20,000 electric customers. It's a significant amount. And when you do that, the, the amount of subsidy coming out of our PBC charges is well in excess of $1.5 million per year. So it has a major impact on revenues. What that would look like on the water side, not quite sure. We will, we're going to take a look at that, but there's, there's major impacts with that. But we cannot, right now, use the PBC charges or the PBC revenue that we have to subsidize water. It's only for electric at the moment.
I think we've asked the public to wait some time. We should probably have our public comments, I think.
Yeah, let's invite our public speakers up first before we proceed. Mr. Armin Avadian?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Armin Avadian. I'm the 2008 president of the Glendale Association and the current chairman of the association's Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee. We've been discussing this on our own at length. I want to make it perfectly clear that realtors are very much in support of conservation of water, electric, et cetera. So there is no doubt about that. We've also been actively participating in the neighboring cities like Crescent Valley Water District. We've very actively participated there, and we actually managed to ask them to postpone any specific decisions because there was, on a state level at California Association, railtors' level, there's legislation being, has been introduced or is being pursued as spearheaded by our Government Affairs Director, Laura, who will be speaking in a minute also. So we're trying to get some kind of a state mandate on conservation. So that's basically on the agenda, and that's coming, hopefully, down the road, subject to what's going on on the state level. We completely support, and we actually, we commend the city for the steps that you're taking for the proposals and everything going on. However, we would like to strongly and very strongly oppose the point-of-sale clause, which is at the very bottom of that proposal. We feel in these times when equities are low and it's hard enough to sell a house, a point-of-sale clause would, in a way, it's almost like it's punishing this buyer or seller in the transaction. Also, it is opening up the realtors to tremendous liability issues. When there's out-of-state sellers, like the banks, who don't want to pay any additional fees, it's hard enough to get disclosures and things out of them. It really complicates things. And as, you know, other realtors will be talking in a minute, it, the, the number of homes sold is such a small percentage of, you know, how many homes there are in the city. It really does not affect water conservation at all. That point-of-sale really is, is not good. We really are 100% opposed to it, and we think it really, it's not a good idea at all. Everything else, we absolutely support. We will be putting together, I believe, a couple of recommendations and suggestions that you may consider. So everything is great. One other thing we would like, we would like to actually participate in, you know, passing on the message. If there's any pamphlets, brochures, whatever, realtors, you know, we door-knock, we call people, we meet people on a daily basis. If there's things that you would like us to pass on to the public... If there's things that you would like us to pass on to the public, we would welcome that opportunity to actually, you know, take that to the community. And at the same time, I heard that there was supposed to be some talks between whoever, whatever committee, and the realtors. We have never heard of that. We've never been, you know, you know, nobody has come to us to say, let's have some talks. Let's discuss this. So we would actually welcome those talks. So we're open to it. We support to 100% accept that point-of-sale clause. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Rick Barnes.
Good morning, Rick Barnes. One question. I'm self-employed. The market changes. I don't get to recharge my clients. I'm just kind of curious why you guys feel that you can't put a reserve for market changes and fluctuations without committing a surcharge again. There's a lot of us that are self-employed, have our own businesses. We have to face the same changes of fuel cost, all the changes. Again, EPA today just announced some new changes that are going to affect all of us. So how are all of us going to be facing with some of this? So those, come back in as reserves are important, but I just saw that. One is neighborhood services. If you're going to use neighborhood services, they already have a surcharge for making notices and so on. So we're going to have a surcharge from neighborhood services, and then we're going to have a charge from water and power also? I wasn't quite sure on that question, that when you put right in neighborhood services. They do have fees, and those fees, every time they get a notice and they go out, they charge again more money. So are we duplicating and double-charging our water users? The other one is that on ownership transfers, what I kind of heard, and I'm not sure if I missed this, but if you're going to do an appeal, we've got to charge someone $50 to come in to say, hey, the house is vacant for two years, or there's one person living in that house, but now I need an appeal because now I have six people living in the home, but I got to pay you $50 to tell you that in 2006, the water usage was so low as a result of owner transfer? I mean, why can't we just come in and say, hey, here's what we have? I mean, I have a house that sat vacant for four years because of people died. They never put it on the market, and it's been vacant for four years, and very little water usage ever was used on that. Why can't we just come in first and say, hey, here's what we have? Now I got it that, I understand, we got to appeal this, not come in and do proactive water usage change. And I got, I can tell you, I got, I counted about nine properties I know of where water usage was based on different, a lot of different uses in the property itself. The other one is on rental leases. I'm really concerned about the rental lease problem, is that I have one-year leases, and again, with one master meter. So when we get these charges coming in, we're now going to be affected by loss of income, and some of these units are not even break even at the moment. We're taken out of our pocket. So if our water usage is going in because of justified eviction, because of rent control, some of the criteria that we deal with in the city of Glendale, how do I pass those charges on to our tenants? I know I can go and tell them, here's a problem, we're going to have a water shortage, we need to drop your water usage. But those water bills come in, how do I pass that on to a tenant when I can't give them a 30-day notice because of state requirements? I've got to wait until that lease expires. So those are questions that I'm concerned with, and you haven't answered for me yet today. Thank you.
Can I, I'd like to just respond to one piece of that. Your first comment regarding the fact that, you know, we need to have an additional charge, we are not allowed by law to charge any more than the actual cost of water. And because of that, we cannot build up the kind of reserve that you're referring to. I mean, that would be nice if we could do that, but we're not allowed to.
Okay. I stand corrected, thank you. I was also wondering on that, if you got to borrow money, or if we get money from the state, we have Glendale Redevelopment Agency that has funds. That money, I believe, is put with the state or some bond agencies. Don't we get a benefit from borrowing our own money back?
To address another point that you just made, I thought, from the presentation, the understanding was that you would be able to go to Glendale Water and Power and indicate that there has been an occupant change and get that resolved prior to spending $50 and filing the appeal. That was my understanding from your presentation.
So should we be doing that now, before July? We're going to be, so it's nothing that happens far.
With our education, because we only found out on the 14th of this month, we're going to go, we're rationing, Metropolitan Water just voted for it. So with our education project that we're going to have, with our Water 101 classes, we're going to let people know if they have this situation, that they can help to us proactive rather than react.
That's separate. Yeah, that's separate from the appeal process, I think.
So it is, there is a separate issue. I didn't pick that up in your presentation.
Actually, we asked about it in the middle of it, but it's, it probably needs to be clarified. If I understand correctly.
They can call and let us know or something like that before we actually are within the process. Once they've gotten a penalty, that's when the process will begin to happen.
Okay. If I understand, if I understand correctly, though, if you have, that's my train of thought here, this is on the.
Pre, I mean, before you get a penalty, that you come in and notify.
Yeah, if you've had a change of ownership. Yeah, pardon me. If you have a change, if you have a change of ownership, or if your family has increased, or you're, you have new people staying at your house, that's a separate procedure you can clarify with the city before.
I'm working with two people right now, called me and said, you know, I have this situation. Before we even put the conservation ordinance in place, once the conservation process, right now, like I said, you know, if they found out that this is what's happening, we could.
So after July, it would, it would have to go through an appeal process? Well, just to be clear.
You know, this occupant issue, it seems like it's so easy to fix, even if it's after the penalty has been issued. Why can't we just resolve it without the $50 fee?
Or give a list of what you need that we got to bring into you. I mean, if you need burst divvies, tax returns, something like that, I mean, make it so it's apparent that we can bring it into you.
Actually, we probably, obviously, would be this.
I don't care about the $50. There's a penalty that's going to be applied and so on. And you start getting into penalties just because you have six kids, and the people before had one old guy that didn't water the lawn.
If we approve your penalty, you know, if we approve whatever the basis is for your conservation appeal, then we will actually, you won't get that.
You'll refund.
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to reset your base.
Oh, okay.
206 base. And at that point, that will give you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you need to go to the podium.
Okay, thank you.
We can move on to maybe next speaker. We'll adjust that further from the staff in the next meeting or so. We have next speaker is Ms. Laura O-Hysco, O-Hysso.
Good morning. I'm Laura Alaso. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Glendale Association of Realtors, representing about 1,800 members. I have a comment, but first, just a question on the timing, and I think, Joy, just, it was my understanding this was not going to the council until June. Joy just says something about the end of May. Do we know when this is going to the council?
The plan is to go to council for a first reading of the ordinance on May 16.
May 16.
And then it would be, if it goes forward, the second reading, which is when the ordinance is adopted, would be the week after, and then it becomes effective July 1.
Okay. So the general public really is not going to be paying a whole lot of attention to this until it becomes a council discussion. So in essence, there's about four or five weeks of real education time when the public's paying attention and can do their changes, and not the $50 appeals, but their change of base 2006. It's not a lot of education time. It's really not, and it's worrisome, I think, in that you will end up getting a lot of appeals from people who are not, who are ignorant of what you're asking them to do. Just a point of clarification. With regard to the point-of-sale requirement that is being suggested to you, we are finding that while some municipalities and water agencies are discussing that, that many are not enacting it. And the reasons that they aren't are a couple. One, we are telling them, and it's true, that anybody buying a new toilet today, if their toilet dies, it is a low-flow toilet. It is required to be, the only thing that is sold. If you are remodeling your house or adding a new bathroom, that's the only kind of toilet you can buy. So many homes already have an existing low-flow toilet. If you look at the sales that happen on single-family homes, or multifamily, or commercial, we have not run the numbers for the city of Glendale because, you know, not all of Glendale is part of GWP with regard to water. Some of it's Crescent Valley Water District. But similarly, we did run the numbers in the city of Pasadena. Pasadena numbers for single-family overturning over of homes, it would take 40 years to reach fewer than 25% of the homes on a point-of-sale mandate. 40 years to reach 25%, fewer than 25% of the homes, because many times, it's the same home that turns over. So that means you have 75% of the single-family residences you aren't reaching in a 40-year period. So if your goal is to get low-flow toilets installed, this isn't the way to do it. This isn't, it is not an effective way to do it. And we would suggest to you that if you really wanted to make a change, which we would be absolutely supportive of, then require it of everybody. Make it over a five-year period, an eight-year period, whatever number that you want to pull out of the hat, your decisions, but require it of everybody. Do it by zip code, do it by neighborhood, do it by, however you want to lay this thing out, but if you really want to have an impact, require this of everyone, including multifamily, including commercial. Multifamily residences turn over even less frequently than single-family residents. Commercial properties turn over even less frequently than that. So if you are looking to have an impact on low-flow showers and toilets, then require it of everybody over a certain period of time. It requires some boldness on your part to recommend that to the city council, and it requires boldness on their part to actually enact that. But if that's our goal, is to save water, then let's do it, and let's do it all the way. Armin Avadian, who spoke before, we are absolutely there to help you with education, with making sure these kinds of things happen. We are, will be happy to do that. We have begun discussions at a statewide level with the California Association of Realtors to put on paper some sort of legislation that would require this kind of toilet retrofit on a statewide basis. But don't wait for that. Don't wait for that. Don't wait for our state legislature to debate this. Lord knows. But be bold and require this of everyone, not just at the very ineffective and inefficient way of doing it at a point-of-sale mandate. Thank you.
Peter in Glen, I have a question. Besides doing the 10% mandatory conservation, are we beefing up our own rebate programs for these water fixtures so we can encourage any customer to switch over?
The, the thought is that the penalty money that would be collected would be plowed back in, in the form of capital investment in conservation or additional conservation incentives.
And the other thing that we, as I say, we are actively looking at, in fact, it's part of our strategic plan, is the implementation of a 2.5% public benefits charge on water that would fund far more conservation technology and incentives for our water customers. Right now, we don't have that ability to do that because all the public benefits, as I mentioned earlier, are on the electric side. So we are looking to do that, and then we could ramp up quite a bit more than we're doing now.
We are limited by just the overall budget.
We're limited by, by a law that only allows us to charge what it costs for water. So, so right now, to fund, any additional dollars being used for incentives have to come from other avenues, whether it's Metropolitan, which does fund some of that.
Okay.
Or, you know, anything we can do within our own funding, but it's limited. It's very, very limited. So we're looking for other means to do it.
Right. I understand it's limited. However, I believe that if you want to encourage, or actually, as mandatory conservation, it may be good to also have all these other programs on the side. So if a customer wants to really be successful in reducing the amount of water usage, then they can do these things. So if we can offer incentive programs, rebate programs, that will encourage the installation of those fixtures, I think we will be more successful.
Agreed.
And the question is always, how, how would we fund it?
Yeah, there's that balance. Well, hopefully, maybe we can look at, as Commissioner Miller suggested, maybe we can look at the budget and also the different areas that we've looked at already in terms of reducing budget. Maybe we can review that a little closer in our next meeting.
Yes, but keep in mind, and I want to be very, very clear, we do not have the ability to use funding because of state law on the electric side, or, excuse me, on the water side only. This is only a water law that restricts the dollars that we are allowed to raise only to, you know, what the cost of water is. And that's very, very important to understand, which we don't have on the electric side. So we have a lot more flexibility on the electric side. On the water side, even if we were to cut our own operating budget in half, that wouldn't give us any more dollars for incentives.
What would be the schedule to implement that PBC for water, to have those type of incentives?
We'll be coming back to you later this year. That's, as I say, it's part of our strategic plan, but it's also being looked at from a statewide basis. So we need to balance off what the state's doing versus what we need to do.
Now, your first answer was to use part of that penalty money.
Yeah.
To go back into the rebate programs. How soon can we make that turnaround? I know the bills, the first bill's going to go out July 1st. Are we going to be able to rapidly turn around and create some programs right away?
Yeah, and my sense is that by the end of the calendar year, we'll be about six months into the mandatory conservation. We'll have a sense of how much money we have that's been collected and how much money we can then turn around and spend, and take the time between now and then and identify some projects. One of, one of the projects that I have in mind that I would like to do is identify senior homes in Glendale that, at this point in time, cannot afford to retrofit their toilets and work with the owners and tenants, do a one-time, we go in with our money, collect it from penalties, and change everything out, building by building. So that kind of achieves what we want to get at.
I think that's great, and I'd appreciate it if maybe we can see a plan of some sort, you know, that you can present to the commission as to like, when the penalty money starts coming in, what we plan on doing with it, and, you know, what's the process, what step, and et cetera. Thank you.
We have a last speaker before we move on. Mr. Gary Neve.
Again, thank you very much for allowing us to public comment on this. I'm Gary Neve, real estate broker in the city. In regards to financing some of these water efficiency programs, in front of the state of California, Assembly Bill 7, or 474, is, will allow the local governments to help fund some of these water efficiency. It's in, it's going to be read, I believe, the next day or so in the assembly. So that might alleviate some of these problems that we have in regards to funding and creating water efficiency. I do want to thank you very much for tackling the issue of water conservation. I applaud what you're doing, as the association, Real Estate Association does. We urge you to pass this water conservation on to the city council for adoption, minus the point-of-sale. There are so many other ways to create that, as Laura has said. Let Glendale be the forefront, let it be on the state forefront, as we are in the Chromium 6 removal. Look at this thing, an opportunity to lead the state of California in regards to water conservation. So please, pass the water conservation on to the city council, minus the point-of-sale mandate. Thank you.
And my comments on that, maybe Glenn and Peter can help out, is I understand that, from what I've heard, that that was not the option, that part of MWD requirement is to have that type of point-of-sale requirement in the ordinance. Is that not true?
The retrofit on resale is a measure that would allow Glendale to comply with best management practices under the California Urban Water Conservation Council MOU. It's not the only way to comply, but it is a way. And as I mentioned to you, we do expect that, as they have in other occasions, the realtors And as I mentioned to you, we do expect that, as they have in other occasions, the Realtors don't particularly, are not enamored with this measure, and we had planned and still do to engage in a conversation with them. But that was, our intention was to recommend that as a way of complying with best management practices for the MOU.
What happens if we don't have that clause in there? Would it still impact what we want to do?
Maybe Craig Keenan can help explain. Fundamentally, if we don't comply with best management practices of the MOU, then we are ineligible for any state grant funding. We need to comply with the MOU. Craig?
Craig Keenan, Public Benefit Programs Manager. What Peter just said is correct. There's a lot of funding out there that came through the stimulus, and it's coming through the state. If we don't comply with the BMPs or have a plan for compliance within a set period of time, then we're not eligible for state funding. The purpose of the retrofit on resale was to bring us in compliance of BMP 14, which is the toilet retrofit. Now, there's other ways to comply. You would have to prove a certain saturation level, and I believe it's 75% or it could be as high as 90, but it's a very high threshold. And you have to show through studies or whatever that the toilets in your city are 75-plus are the ultra-low-flow model. So that was the purpose of that. We have our rebate program. We give rebates still for changing out toilets. We have a program that's funded mainly by electric, but water pays for the water parts of it, where we'll go into a home and we'll change out all your faucet aerators and your showerheads, and check your toilets, and look at your lawn to help you with your conservation. So we do have some programs on there. They're not funded to the level they'll need to be. That's why we would need a PBC charge for water, but that helps.
Jim Miller?
Yes, your language was hedged a little bit. If I understood correctly, if we don't have the point-of-sale, there may be some other way to comply with the best management practice.
My language was hedged, and you're correcting that, is because I'm not certain whether there is. I heard a proposal, which, to me, I like the boldness of it, of requiring every, everybody to retrofit, and I don't know if that would bring us into compliance. I'm saying I don't know. That's why.
If I could elaborate on what Peter was saying, we didn't talk in great depth about what we've got in our plumbing retrofit portion of the ordinance, and calling it a retrofit on resale ordinance is a bit of a misnomer because it is, in fact, a plumbing retrofit. And the way, as it's currently drafted, as proposed, it would apply upon sale of property. In the case of apartments and other rented units, it would apply at the time of transfer of ownership. But in any event, it would apply to everybody citywide by 2019. So within the next 10 years, whether your property has changed hands or not, you would need to do the retrofit of your plumbing fixtures. Again, we didn't talk in depth about the ordinance. It's something I think it would be very beneficial for staff to get together with Realtors Association and discuss in detail what we've got proposed, because it's a little bit difficult to talk on such a high level, you know, and deal with some of these concerns without getting into it in some depth.
And I understand that's going to take place with the discussions.
Yeah. But what you're saying, then, is that the retrofit is eventually required of everyone, right?
Of everyone. And that would apply to commercial properties, residential, across the board.
Okay, and over what period of time?
10 years.
Okay.
Right, what's, she has the, what's next on the agenda?
I think just consideration, right?
Yeah, let me, I just wanted to close by recapping. There's a couple of slides I wanted to show you in terms of why are we here today talking about this? In terms of an update from MWD, MWD, as you know, gets supplies from two sources. One of the sources, the Colorado River, the supplies are actually surprisingly good. The State Water Project, however, can only deliver 30% of what's needed by Southern California, and that's driven the overall picture to be 10% short in total. And that's considering what's in storage. And so the Metropolitan Water District announced the allocation, and they do have a plan that relies on price as a method to curtail demand. Every agency, as Joy mentioned, every agency that takes water from MWD has a varying level of dependence from MWD. Some agencies are 100% dependent, others are not at all dependent, and the majority falls somewhere in between. Glendale is 65% to 70% dependent on MET, and that kind of varies with how well we manage our local production, that's recycled and groundwater. Taking the 70% number, if we are to cut back 10%, we need a 7% conservation. So that's what's driving our 10% level. The penalties are significant. Joy said $2,000 an acre foot. It's actually, the first tier of penalties from MET is $2,600 an acre foot, and it goes up from there to about 30, I want to say $3300 or $3400 an acre foot, which is a very substantial penalty that Glendale as a whole would have to pay if we don't conserve. And so it's really important for everybody to do their part. And so the, these two bullets are the summary of what we talked about, is we do need to change our code, and there are financial impacts. And what you're being asked to consider today is whether you're comfortable, and would you recommend with us to proceed with the proposed changes to the municipal codes, code as discussed here today with the input that we received? And also, would you recommend that we proceed with option one, or would you like us to consider a different option for recovering our base expenses?
Jim Miller?
In our discussion, I noted four points that were a little bit controversial with your water conservation ordinance, and maybe if we could sort those out, we could have some kind of discussion about whether we would have a motion or not. One has to do with the report to commission on water restrictions that Commissioner Yao had suggested. And what I would suggest is that we have such reports, but that we not incorporate it into the water conservation ordinance. That's what I would suggest for your consideration. A second item had to do with the $50 fee, and there's some concern, I guess, over why it's $50. What I would suggest is we have some kind of grace period, or we waive the $50 refund for those people who are able to demonstrate that they've had changes to their family or changes in their domestic situation that would warrant a change in their allocation. Let's see, another point had to do with the point-of-sale, which the public had brought up, and I guess you clarified that is, that is part of the best management practices as currently recommended. And, you know, I think some kind of discussion with the Realtors is warranted for that. I have a third item here, but my notes are kind of unclear. Did anyone else have anything else that was kind of controversial?
Well, your option one, your staff recommendation, is to modify existing rate structure, and assuming, is that number one?
Um.
Or is that something?
Sorry, sorry for the confusion. That's just a slide summarizing the two items we've brought for you today. Let me, let me get you to those options. The three options that we looked at was modifying the existing rate structure by adding a water shortage charge, or second option was to adopt a whole new rate structure altogether.
Right, and you're asking us to determine that today, right?
Asking if you have any thoughts, any advice, how do you, how would you like us to proceed?
I think you gave a very thorough presentation on how to go about that. You increased the second-tier rate. It was thorough discussion. I think it was prudently designed. I would vote to go with that. I would recommend that we move forward with that, rather than a totally new rate structure at this point. That would be the quickest way of doing it, and so that would be my recommendation.
Well, for me, I like to provide the city council with options. So I would suggest moving forward with option one, which is modify the existing rate structures as a base, but provide the city council with the tier structure so that the people who still wants to use water can use it, but they still have to pay. So maybe do a tier three or four, if you think that's preferable, maybe just stick with tier, additional tier, and present that to the city council as another alternative, since they might not be, maybe not be as forgiving with option one, because they want to still have people use the water, but then the people wants to pay for it, can continue paying for it, just at a higher price.
No, I thought the tier structure reconsideration would be moving forward in 2010. This is just what we're recommending right now for, like, the, maybe for the immediate need for the next year, right?
I think what we're supposed to do here is consider possible options to remedy financial impacts. So do we have any other options to suggest besides what you recommended, is what I understood? And the only other option I can think of is what Hugh suggested, that we alter the tier structure. The other thing you could do, I guess, is alter the, you know, incorporate something in the meter charge or the adjustable rate, but I think that's even less rational. So I would, I think what Hugh suggested is the only other, really, the only option I can think of offhand.
Well, I just don't want to provide the city council with just one option. It's their ultimate decision on whether to implement this or not. They might say, no, take no action, like you said, it wouldn't be wise of them to do that, but they should say, let's look at other options. So at least I could provide at least an alternative option, and a multi-tier structure would be a better option than just the option one.
How long will it take you to come up with the multi-tier structure?
I would have to get back to you on that. Probably not more than maybe a month, month and a half to sort, to comb through all of the implications of a different tier structure. Even the addition, I view the addition of a tier as a new tier structure, and it changes the dynamic, because we need to understand how many people would be affected. Beyond the people, how much volume of sales would be affected by a new tier, how much revenue that would generate, and make sure that that is not giving us too much revenue or too little revenue.
Right.
So it is a bit of a complicated calculation, but nevertheless, I think we could get there and present at least an alternative.
No, I, one of the public, one of our public speakers indicated that time is of the essence. We are not providing enough time for our customers for this whole conservation. So while I agree with Commissioner Yao that we should be presenting to council multiple options, however, I feel that if that's going to shorten even our time to notify the public, our customers, that this is coming down, and what possible impacts they might be looking at, I feel that may not be a good use of time.
We do intend, and thank you for those comments, and we do intend to ramp up our conservation outreach effort starting now, so that by the time we get to full swing, obviously, that point didn't get conveyed very well earlier, but we intend to start now and not wait until June, when council has approved the ordinance, and only have two, three weeks to educate customers.
No, but when we change our rates, are we obligated to?
Of course, of course.
Let the public know, at least 30, 60 days ahead?
Of course. If we make any change.
45, okay.
It would be, we would be going to council and proposing, whether it's the water shortage charge or a new tier structure, we would go to council and say, please let us advertise this. We would advertise for at least 45 days, mailing a notice to everybody who is a property owner. And last time we did this, we mailed over 120,000 notifications to make sure we covered everyone. And then after the 45 days, there is two hearings at city council. So there's plenty of time built in, review a change in rates of any kind.
Now, if I understand correctly, these changes will start June 1st, right? And will reflect in the July 1st bill? Or am I one month ahead of what the plan is? Your July 1st bill will reflect the conservation penalty or thereof, right? July?
Not necessarily. It would depend when the water conservation goes into effect, but it's going to be with the first full billing period after the water conservation goes into effect. So it's not going to come up, sneak up on anyone mid-billing cycle.
Okay.
Right.
So if this gets approved by council and end of May?
Right.
So we need a 45-day notice?
Let me try, let me try separating two things. One is the conservation ordinance.
Yes.
And another is the rates. They're two separate things. You follow the ordinance and the life of that process, council would be asked to approve it, and it would be in effect July 1. So we'd have new ordinance provisions for mandatory conservation. Along with that, we would recommend to council and have in effect 10% mandatory starting July 1.
Okay.
Okay, so at that point in time, first full billing cycle after that, which for monthly bills is one month later, for most people is bimonthly, two months later.
September, okay.
Then they have the provisions of the revised ordinance, along with a 10% mandatory conservation, which includes the fees that are in effect today, but also, you know, everything else that we've discussed. As far as rates go, that's a completely separate discussion, and we would, we would bring to council some options, if that's what your commission recommends. We would bring option one, which is an additional charge, option two, which might be an additional tier. Let council decide what they want us to pursue. We would advertise that to the public, then go to council to have that approved, and then that goes into effect. So that could end up being July, could end up being August, could end up being September, separate and apart from the conservation.
So it'll be an independent process?
Right.
And so potentially, if that gets approved by council, August, September, October, then we will shift rate structure?
Yes.
After that, right after that, while we're still in 10% mandatory conservation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I have to say this, because that's my job to say it, is we will have lost some revenue in July, August, September, however long it takes.
Right.
What I would suggest is, in your presentation to council, you list the various options, and I think it's not inappropriate to list others besides those we've talked about. You could amend the meter charge, you could amend the adjustable rate, and then indicate the advantages and disadvantages of each option. And I think it'll be kind of clear that your recommendation is the easiest to implement and the most rational, but that's what I would suggest. Of course, one of your options is not to do anything at all, and of course, they could see the consequence of that as well.
Right.
Should we move on to discussion of the water conservation ordinance? It's not up there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to discuss that, or just make a motion?
Okay. Let's see, on this, the issue that we just talked about, we could make a motion to recommend financial impact of mandatory conservation be addressed by looking at, I guess, would be about five options, right? One is your recommended option, one is altering the tier structure that Hugh, Commissioner Yao, had suggested. One would be to alter the meter charge, one would be to alter the adjustable rate, and the last one would be to do nothing. And then to list the advantages and disadvantages of each. Does that sound?
Yes, yes. And as far as the second, the second of the two actions we're looking for, that's exactly what we'll do, is we'll present to them one option, which will be our recommendation, which is the additional charge of some sort. We'll present to them other options they have, with the pros and cons of each one.
Okay, so I would move that we, the commission, recommend that financial impact of mandatory conservation be addressed by looking at those five options.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Now to the water conservation ordinance?
And then a motion to, so you hear a motion for the Glendale Water and Power Commission to recommend to city council to authorize Glendale Water and Power to propose changes to the Glendale municipal code relating to water conservation?
Before we do that, I just want to clear up a couple of issues. Are we okay with the concept of having a report to the commission about water restrictions independent of the water conservation ordinance? Does that sound okay? Well, remember, remember we were talking about water restrictions, and you said that you would like the commission to hear those.
Oh, before they put on a water restrictor or shutting off a customer?
Yeah, right, and that would, if we were to do what you recommended, if I understand correctly, it would alter the water conservation ordinance. And what I'm suggesting is that we have a separate reporting procedure where the commission can hear what's going on, but we just allow the existing water conservation ordinance to be, to follow the same processes outlined for handling water restrictions.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, for a council, is that in the ordinance already, or that would change the ordinance if we required that before a customer shut off or have a flow restrictor placed on them, they, we should hear about it first? Is that not in the ordinance already, that would change it?
That's not currently in the ordinance, but that's something.
It is, Christine. It is. The ordinance calls for flow restrictors to The ordinance calls for flow restrictors to be placed.
No, what he means is for the commission to hear about it before it's put in.
Commission to be notified of that.
Oh, commission to be notified is not in. It's the staff's.
I'm recommending that the commission not be notified, that the staff continue with the existing process outlined in the draft water conservation ordinance, but that the commission here in its meetings regarding how these things are progressing.
So, maybe just an MOU with the staff and the commission, that there'll be a report before they shut off the customer?
Okay. Now, on this $50 fee, I would suggest that we have some kind of grace period where we waive the fee for people who are able to justify changes based on things like the number of people in the household or recent water sale, for something like a six-month period. Does that sound?
You know, from my point of view, this was one of the most difficult issues, and we'll do whatever the commission and the council want. You know, from, again, from a social fairness point of view, it only makes sense that if somebody comes to us and says, you know, things aren't as you said, they shouldn't have to pay the $50, for us to turn around and say, well, you were right. And so, we can have that fully refundable, if you'd like, or we can give, we can leave that as a non-refundable fee and have a six-month grace period where people can come on their own and say, my circumstances have changed. We'll do whatever, whatever you prefer. I would almost prefer to have the fee refundable, because it's cleaner, it's a simpler approach, is that if we end up agreeing with a customer, that we just give them back their $50.
I'm suggesting it be refundable only in those cases when they're able to show that there's been some significant change in the domestic situation since 2006.
Or other provisions of the code, because there's a few others in which they can prove that, you know, they exceeded their base and there was good reason for it.
And that can be done outside of the commission, right? I mean, staff can do that before it comes to us.
But I do agree that there has to be some kind of recovery here to help you out. It's going to be terrible.
And we'll let you know. If we find that we're, you know, we're really losing money on this, we'll come back and let you know what's going on.
Well, that's why I like the process of having a successful appeal, then you get the refund. So, I would suggest increasing the processing fee, so that we avoid having to deal with the people who just wants to appeal, just for the appeal sake, so that, so then we can only get the real appeals, and then if they're successful, then we refund that money.
Do we know the cost on the utility of the appeal process generally? It's probably going to vary per appeal, right?
Joy has mapped the process of who would actually handle it, and how much, you know, an estimate of time that it would take. Joy, did you happen to put labor dollars, fully burdened labor dollars on that?
I estimate. I put estimated labor dollars according to what we pay temps who come into the phone center.
And how much was that?
It came closer to $100. As I said, the appeal itself, probably even before it would come to you people, it's been touched 10 times.
Yeah, of course.
But at the same time, $100 appeal fee seems exorbitant. So, I mean, that's your issue to consider.
Well, I'm okay with $50, but...
I'm okay with $50, as long as it gets refunded if the appeal is successful.
What I'm suggesting is that we have the $50 be refundable only in those cases where people are able to show that the domestic situation has changed greatly since 2006, and that they, if it's successful in some other way, that it be left in place to help the utility cover the cost. Because you see, customers are going to be impacted by this process otherwise, that the cost is going to have to go to the customers who are compliant. And the reason I think it's worth having this refund in these other cases is I don't think that we're going to have time in the next two months to make everyone aware that they should be notifying their utility that their domestic situation's changed. A lot of people are not going to find out until they get their bill and say, oh, my gosh, it went up. And then they're going to call, and then they'll find out. So...
I like the grace period, too, if that's the plan we're proceeding with this. I would rather have the grace period and then maybe have a refundable fee as a secondary option.
Well, we're just suggesting one or the other, right? Either the grace period or the refundable. I just, if the refundable is easier for the staff to implement, I suggest that we do the refundable option, and that we stick with the domestic situation. Does that sound doable for us?
So, what is more convenient to implement for the staff?
The grace period seems to me, it creates a lot of complications. It's simpler to have a clear understanding that if there is a proven case where the domestic situation has changed, that the $50 fee gets refunded. It's just simpler to implement than saying, have until a certain date, and then you have to deal with everybody that comes in a week later and says, well, I didn't know, now what are you going to do? Now, you know, I mean, it's just, the more black and white it can be, the easier it is for staff to come up with consistency. And that helps a lot in administering programs like that.
Sure.
So, should we put in there that it's a $50 fee that would be refundable if the appeal process is successful?
I'm saying $50 if, only if the domestic situation changed. If it's successful in any other case, that'd be left in place.
Really?
Yeah.
I guess it's a compromise that we can...
Okay, okay.
Can I clarify? Would that be just for residential properties, then? Is that what you're envisioning?
No, commercial as well. If they, for example, that's a good point, I'm using the word domestic, that's a little bit ambiguous. But suppose there's a business that changed ownership since 2006, and they now have an industry present that's much more water-intensive. I would think that they would be eligible also for a waiver, and that they not be charged or that they be refunded on that.
So, looking at the grounds that we have for an appeal, it would seem that the most appropriate ones would be a change in occupancy, essentially, whether it's residential, commercial, or otherwise. Potentially also, though, if there were, perhaps water usage was necessary because of illness or health, or something along those lines, that you'd want it?
Yes.
That as well?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Yeah, the point of sale issue, it's not really clear that this is a best management practice or not, or... It is.
It is.
Okay. Well, then I think we have to stick with it, or the utility's going to lose out on its funding, right?
Yes, and I think what we need to do, Christine correctly pointed out, that we have incorporated it. It's not just purely retrofit and resale and just left to an undetermined period of time. It does incorporate some of the elements that were raised in the comments, in that it gives finality to everybody must retrofit in 10-years period of time. You know, we need to engage with both the Realtors Association and the Apartment Managers Association. We've committed to doing that, and we made that commitment to you, as well as our city manager, that we would do that right between this presentation and going to council. So, we need to engage in that discussion with them and see if we can get...
I think that's what the commission would agree to, that you need to speak to them.
Yes. You anticipate having a compromise between the Realtors Association and GWP on implementing this point-of-sale feature?
Well, I hope to bring back to city council something that is for the best interest of the city, and it needs to incorporate and reflect everybody's best interest.
I think we can go with that view, too.
Something worth noting, I guess, is that a home is sold several times over in recent years and has already had to retrofit. There's going to be no impact on the buyer or seller of this requirement. You know, I was able to read my other note here. It was just a reminder that we make sure we provide education to our customers about the rebate program and about the change of occupancy issues, the other things that we would like them to contact us in advance about. But otherwise, I'm okay with the ordinance, with this refund on the $50.
So, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that, I'll move that the Glendale Water and Power Commission recommend that Glendale City Council authorize Glendale Water and Power to propose changes to the Glendale Municipal Code relating to water conservation, as presented to the GWP commission during the April 20th, 2009 special meeting, with a caveat that we have a refund on the $50 fee related to change of occupancy and the other issues that council recommended, or as mentioned a few moments ago.
You hear a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Anything else on the agenda, Sheila? You have a motion to adjourn?
I just wanted to thank those members of the public who waited so long through this meeting to be able to speak to us. And yes, I do move that we adjourn.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.